All right, everybody, we're gonna get going. Can I have the roll call, please?
Yes.
Drive in and turn around.
Here.
Gibson, Kepler.
Here.
Ormsby.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here. Okay, all right, we had minutes from March 16th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes of March 16th as submitted.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We had a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March 16th, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission for April 20th, 2022. We are a recommending body appointed by the City Council to review matters of site plans, zoning, land use and such. I see a number of folks in the audience tonight, so if you have input on a particular case, typically the way it goes is I'll work through the commission here first, and then recognize the audience for comments on a particular case. Hardly any of you took the first row. Those are cheaper seats up there, and we get to you first. So if you want to move around between now and then, it'll be okay too. So we would like your input if you're willing to do so. And with that, we will begin. Is it Greg? All right, he's got it. Here we go.
First item before you, Chair, is case number 22007. This item was deferred at the March meeting after a number of comments from the commission and public present. This case is rezoning. The request is a rezone from current R, the pending R1, after revocation of a PUD there, to R4. The applicant is David Kempen. This parcel is located off on the west side of Devil's Glen Road, just north of Duck Creek. The parcel is roughly 10 acres. It's been used as an industrial site and other uses in the last few decades. This is currently being, the site's currently being cleaned up, and I don't believe there's any, the non-conformities existing there are trending downward. Just to revisit, this is the, R1 zoning is currently in place after this revocation of PUD before council. The surrounding zoning is R1. Across the road, across Devil's Glen is a mobile home park. It is zoned A1, but in, if it was developed today, it'd be a zone mobile home. And there's also some R2 zoning to the northeast. The proposed concept is multifamily and townhomes. I will note that with the concept including town, multifamily, the only zoning which permits this is R4 and R5, and also our C2 and C3 and C7 with a special use permit. Take a look at the future land use map. The site is currently designated as urban medium intensity on our land use map. The surrounding area is urban low intensity, excepting, except the mobile home park across the street and Duck Creek Park, which is designated as parks and open space. The, our urban medium intensity allows for multiple residentially zoned zoning classifications. R1 through R5 are contemplated, including some commercial. I will note that this has been designated as a either urban medium intensity or prior to that, in previous iterations of our future land use map, medium intensity on the land use map since 2002. I did note in the staff report, it was 30 years, but I want to correct that. It was 2002. Prior to that, we did not distinguish between density or different densities of residential land use. But the site was proposed to be of a medium intensity as far back as the proposed PUD back in 1970. So you'll note the, and at the 2002 Future Land Use Map adoption, staff at that time went through, for the whole city, outlined different areas that were changing on the map. And this is one specific area which was designated as changing to medium intensity or being designated as medium intensity. And there was at that time, through the minutes, stakeholders representing that area that wanted that to be shown as medium intensity. Another thing to bring up is kind of how our future land use is work and how they work with our zoning. There's a transect of all of our land uses shown on the screen, all the way from ag, agricultural preservation to rural, all the way to probably our most densest use, which is our downtown or even our urban high intensity. So urban medium kind of has aspects of some what you'd see in urban low, but some just on the cusp of what you'd see on some of our higher density land uses. Other considerations, comprehensive plan considerations for this request. Our goals outlined in our comprehensive planned, plan, and I identify these, enhancing, developing new land and streets is one goal, providing different housing options, and reinvesting in existing neighborhoods, enhancing community design and character, promoting recreational and cultural activity and attracting young people. Staff contends these, this proposal would benefit the public and not negatively, negatively impact the surrounding properties. Taking a look at the revised concept. The original concept showed four apartment buildings with 146 units. The revised concept has removed one of those apartment buildings to the northeast of the parcel. In its place has, it has 12 town, single-family townhomes. They're shown running north to south in a row along Devil's Glen. Also in addition to the concept are some detached garages that would be on the northern part of the parking lot. The number of units in the three existing, as shown in the concept plan, multifamily structures remain the same. So you have 114 multifamily units and then 12 townhomes, so totaling 126 units on this site. So this is an overall less dense concept proposal. In addition, the townhomes are two stories tall. The previous building was three stories tall to northeast. So this is going to be a, the height is going to be lowered, and the amount of frontage or the, the building frontage on the northern property owner is going to be reduced by just having one side of a townhome basically facing that property owner. This, the previous concept did meet our density requirements for the R4 district. This concept is less dense, units per acre, by going by that factor, so this also meets that. The concept as proposed with the townhomes. The revised, revised concept also moved the all buildings 50 feet back from Devil's Glen Road. So there's a 50-foot setback. We do allow a, buildings to go 35 feet with a included berm, but in this case, that's not required. The, I mentioned the detached garages. These are going to be optional for some tenants in the apartments. Other tenants would use the open, open-air parking lot. There are parking garages in the buildings on the ground level, a number of them. And then the townhomes each have a two-stall garage with, with room for parking in the driveway as well on the ground floor. So a number of the parking is covered in the building or in the detached garages. I would note the garages also provide some concealment of the parking lot to the north, northern property owner. The property owner is at a higher elevation, so will still have looking down on the property as he does today, just to note that. As far as our thoroughfare and off-street parking, there's still one access shown off of Devil's Glen, located on the southeast part of the development area, just north of Duck Creek. There's currently a, a traffic study is being required for this development. Draft traffic study has been submitted to the engineering department. It's still under review. And any questions can, I believe they're still under review, and more questions will probably be answered at site development plan phase. On-site parking shown includes a mixture of ground-level garages, detached garages, and a parking lot totaling 202 spaces. The applicant did note the following assumptions for parking calculations. One space per studio, 1.5 spaces per one-bedroom, less than 800 square feet, and then two spaces for all other units, including each townhome unit. This does deviate slightly from what our parking, off-street parking schedule requires in code. We require, we have two calculations for resident, multifamily residential. Two spaces for anything over 800 square feet and 1.5 under 100, 800 square feet. So the one space per studio is the deviation. I will note that the total required based off these assumptions is 198 spaces. So they have four extra spaces with this proposal. Depending on the number of studio apartments, we could be, we're talking four spaces maybe, or it really depends on the, the adopted floor plan, which will be reviewed in site development plan phase. So that will be something to revisit. The floor plan elevations have not changed. They, they consist of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments, multiple amenities, modern amenities. Some units will have a garage attached or they'll have access to directly their garage. Some, with other garage stalls in the apartment buildings, they'll be accessed by a corridor. So tenants living on second and third level will be able to, be able to access that, those garage stalls in interior, through an interior corridor. All units show balcony. The attached garages, we don't have concepts for those, but those will be available to some tenants. And then the townhomes, we do not have a concept planned for, but they are, the applicant has stated, they'll be a similar build and look to the townhomes the applicant developed on Devil's Glen Road, the east side of Devil's Glen Road and south of 53rd. If you're familiar with those, that location. Revisit one, the parcel, we, the city of Bettendorf currently owns a small parcel that was previously used, I believe, for either sewer, sanitary, pumping. It's not, no longer in use. We do have sanitary and storm lines going through this property, and there are easements recorded for that. In addition, we do have a bike path access easement. Much of this is overlaid or on the floodplain, which is on the southern portion, portion of this property. I will note the applicant does own the mobile home park, which is located across the street at 1301 Devil's Glen. There's a location of the sewer, sewer lines going through the property. And then the recorded easements, as you can see, the recording on the right is the ax, the bike access easement, which pretty much encumbers the whole south and western side of the property and overlays the sewer easements as well. Another encumbrance to the property is the floodplain, as is located adjacent to Duck Creek. The previous meeting, I stated that the applicant would require a Loma, which would be a letter of map amendment from FEMA. The applicant has hired a surveyor, and I will kind of walk through what the surveyor will be doing, will be doing to show that this property is, because the, the proposed building locations are outside of the floodplain. The, the map on the left is the, map is shown FEMA or flood insurance rate map. It shows a 500-year floodplain, 100-year floodplain, which we regulate, and a floodway. These are based on elevations, and FEMA notes these in the flood insurance study. They note the, the base flood elevation for different cross-sections all along major streams and waterways. So if you look at this map, it shows a cross-section of M as 591.5 feet. Down here, we have, I think, L as, and it's covered by Devil's Glen, but 585 or I think it's 591 feet and so on. FEMA has issued a preliminary maps, which would be effective next year. And they look a lot different than the currently effective map. And they align to, out to the ridge, per se, of, of the current property. But that won't be until next year. So the survey, the surveyor hired will be taking elevations, more accurate elevations onsite, and then putting those elevation, using those elevations and the flood insurance study to show that this map isn't accurately depicting the floodplain on the property. And just to show you what the flood insurance rate study contains, it has flood profiles for the entire Duck Creek and all creeks in Scott County. And right here, you see Devil's Glen Road Bridge is noted at, roughly for the 100-year floodplain at like 591 feet. And then that cross-section M is in this, is just a little upstream of the bridge, so it's a little higher. So I had mentioned 591, 592 feet. You'll note that this, this is the contour of the area, and this is just based on our elevation data. He's taking more precise measurements. There's a 600-foot contour line running along the ridge there. So that's seven feet, eight feet above what the base flood elevation is currently at the site. The base, the base of, the actual base of flood elevation is more likely around the mid to bottom part of that ridge. So based off this evidence, we're pretty confident, staff is confident that FEMA will use this, that information to reflect the actual floodplain there. And here noted is the actual table showing those, those floodplain elevations for the site and those cross-sections. This is a site photo, a dated site photo. This was from the previous meeting. Since that meeting, most of these cars are gone. I believe the shipping container is still there and a, a few cars now. There was a tenant there that is no longer, no longer there, so the site is vacant. This is a view from the bike path right underneath the bridge. This is just kind of a perspective of what a taller structure would look like along that ridge line. And this is a site photo from basically the, the creek bed. Right along, there's some benches by the bike path, and just to show you a perspective with no foliage of what the site would look like. Some rezoning considerations, this is in our ordinance. So staff uses these seven criteria when reviewing a proposed rezoning. Staff contends that this does meet, this rezoning conforms to the future land use map and in the comprehensive plan, and it's consistent with those goals identified in the plan. The subject property is designed so it's to permit the, it matched the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood and not negatively impact nearby parcels. We look at externalities such as noise, traffic. All of those things have been adequately considered for the rezoning, pending a site plan review, of course. And there, there are adequate public utilities and services available at this parcel. This is an infill property, so services are already existing. And the pattern of this development, while more intense than the surrounding property, it is adequately buffered and it has, as shown on the map. And we were making the determination that this amendment would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The last, the last consideration, probably most important, the proposed rezoning is in the public interest and not solely in the interest of the applicant. And that's in reviewing the, the externalities and the, we're talking heights of the building, how close those buildings are going to be the neighboring properties. And being one adjacent property owner has a building right next to the property. All other property owners are either across the creek or across Devil's Glen Road. We, staff would contend this property is adequately buffered from, for more intense use. For our staff recommendation, still, staff contends this proposal conforms with the future land use map. It, it also, we will note that there are, there is a tremendous buyer demand for homes in the area, and there's an economic, economic demand for this. This is also an infill property, and this would be reinvesting in the neighborhood, which has not seen much development as of recent. And it's also consistent with multiple goals and actions cited in the comprehensive plan. For this, for these reasons, and the facts noted above, staff recommends approval of this rezoning request with the following conditions. Traffic study will be finalized in, prior to site development plan review. Assigned affidavit acknowledging the site development plan shall adhere in principle to the approved concept plan. So that's, that would make this a conditional rezoning, condition to the site, approval of the site development plan. Condition number three, FEMA documentation accepting the surveyed elevations for the floodplain be accepted prior to issuing of any building permits. So no building permits would be issued before the proper documentation be submitted to our office, and this would be true for any single-family home development or be a subdivision or just one development. And then approval of these, this rezoning does not waive any state, local, federal provisions as required by law. And I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything from your perspective since the presentation or publication?
Just a couple of things to add to what I think was a really well-done presentation, very complete. Just want to unpack a couple of things and highlight a few for the commissioners. I would highlight that this is a conditional rezoning. And because it's a conditional rezoning, we've given you a little more information on the potential site plan. Again, we're not doing a site plan review at this time. We're doing a rezoning review, which is related to the use. But because we have conditioned it so specifically, we're giving you a little more information on that potential site plan as it may be developed. We had a first reading last night at City Council for the PUD revocation that was passed. It has two more readings, so if you're keeping score at home, that is moving forward. And then I think Taylor did a great job just noting our normal process. When anything develops in our floodplain in Bettendorf, we have a very specific process they have to follow. And, and in doing so, they have to be out on the floodplain by raising two feet or more, or demonstrate that the property is not actually in the floodplain, which is what the applicant is doing in this case, and staff's analysis says that's, that's probably right. So if there are any concerns about that, you know, we've done a lot of investigation on that. We feel pretty confident. And that's all I have to add.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mark. All right, questions and comments from the commission, please. Joe?
Just a couple of questions. I agree, it was a very, presentation's very well-done and the documentation was very complete. Thank you for that. And, and I agree, there's a demand for more affordable housing, no doubt about that. And I also agree that this site's been in need of attention for a long time. But, but two questions. One, what, what would be Bettendorf's plan with respect to the sliver of property that it owns? Would we somehow transfer that? Is there a need to hang on to it? And second, and this question may be subject to the site development plan. Is, would this call for a stoplight, or do you need the traffic study to, to, to prove out whether a stoplight would be necessary at that corner?
Sure. So to the, the first question, Joe. The parcel of land that the city owns, since it's actually a standalone parcel, not right away, it will require us to dispose of it through our city disposal process. So the plan will be that we will sell that to the developer and retain our easement rights through there. The sewer runs really on the south end of that parcel, so we need, let's say about half of that parcel to remain as easement. But we do not need to retain ownership of the parcel itself. So that would be conveyed back to the developer. And then, yes, the traffic study will flesh all of that out. Preliminary indications is, and I, I agree with that, is that a traffic signal will not be needed. But the evaluation on turn lanes is, is what we're digging more into.
Thank you.
Others from the commission?
I have a few questions. Taylor, I have a couple of questions related to parking. You, you had the slide with the prior plan and the new plan side by side. There we go. Okay, so one question is, in the staff report, you referenced four garages. I'm only seeing three. I don't know if that was...
It could have been a...
Okay, so we're looking at three, most likely.
Yep.
You also commented on the need to separate the townhome building into two separate buildings?
Yep. So this is a concept plan. We would review at the site development plan phase, we would get more into how building separation and so on. Our zoning ordinance does prescribe townhomes in our, R3 and R4. The max number attached townhomes is eight.
Okay.
So he, the applicant has shown 12 in a row, and I've notified the applicant of this. So they need to be split, or probably most likely six and six. And then separated, I think our minimum separation for those townhomes is 15 feet.
So here's my question. When I look at the revised concept, if those, if those 12 are split, is that going to impact the proximity to the house to the north? Will it impact the proximity, will it eliminate parking spot places to the south? How is that going to impact the area altogether?
Given the concept plan, how, it's just a concept and very, doesn't have a...
Yeah, I know, it's not the site plan.
I can't really answer that question yet.
Okay, so I guess I'm just making an observation then, that as this moves forward to the next phase, we still have 198 parking spots required. So if that change affects the parking, then that could become a problem.
I did a little math myself on that, kind of looking at... Well, no, I did this with my shoes on, so I just looked at it and said, just simply, I kind of, conceptually with the same thing, question in my mind. So if I took a foot off every, every unit, that'd give me 12 feet, I only need three more. Theoretically, I said, okay, I could still make that work by taking a foot off a unit, only be three foot short, and still provide everything else that we would be looking for. So, don't know if that's the case, but I just said, hey, sorry, how would they do that? Well, they could make them just slightly smaller units. That would give you, one foot apiece would give you 12 feet, three more for your 15, one way to do it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I was looking at the same thing, though.
So the other thing that I looked at in comparing original to revised is I heard you say that we've, the townhouses are flipped, so to speak. They're parallel to Devil's Glen. But I'm thinking about the single-family home that abuts this property. Now we have, before, we had parking, as, I don't know if you call that a buffer, but it created space between that three-story building and the single-family home. Now we have a shorter building, but it looks to me like it's a lot closer to that house. So the impact is there, but in a different way.
The size of the townhouse would be similar to, I mean, the, the side-facing, the property owner would be of similar size to a single-family home, or probably less.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's...
Like a two-story house.
Exactly. That's the, the point I was trying to get across.
Could I jump in, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just, just one clarification. There was a house. It was actually, it was actually a business office, but it looked like a home. It was used as a business office. It may have had a rental on the upstairs. It was two and a half, maybe three stories. It's burned down in the last year and a half, two years. So the condition of the site, as far as the height of the structure that was on it relative to the home you're speaking of, would probably be actually less, I think, now with the townhome level compared to the house that has since burned down.
I understand that, but the house that burned down was in the middle of the parcel. It wasn't right at the boundary line where the townhouses are, so.
Yeah. I would say that was not in the middle, but it was not as near to the boundary as these.
Right.
Yeah, I believe it was in, it was somewhere in that area there. I don't know if I have a historical photo of it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one other comment, and I know we're not talking about the site plan right now. In observing this, we have 126 units. A lot of parking, but I don't see any significant outdoor space, any green space, any place for a playground or any, and I realize we're right across the road. Well, you don't even have to cross the road. You can go under the road to get to the park. But that's just something to keep in mind in a development, and that's a comment, not a question of this size. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Others?
I have a, not really a question, but a comment. When you get around to the traffic study...
When you get around to the traffic study, assuming it comes back and says you don't need a traffic light, or even if it does, I highly suggest that there's a right turn lane off of Devil's Glen, and there's also a, a way to turn in left in there, a way to turn right out and left out. In other words, three full lanes going out with a right turn lane coming in, specifically that right turn lane to allow for some space for cars coming over the hill, and not rear-end cars waiting to turn in on the right.
Yep. That, that study will evaluate that, and what we probably, another condition that we will probably add, similar to the condition that we did, and this still has to be fleshed out as we finish the study. If you remember when we approved the Ewing development up near Northwest Bank Tower, so the Hungry Hobo, and some of the additional sites there. Traffic studies are an art, quite honestly, because you're projecting things, not based off actual traffic data. So we'll, we'll evaluate the projections. We may also throw a condition in there to protect ourselves if, if the projections are borderline. So i- if they're, if they say that it's a level of service that's one notch down from requiring a turn lane, for example, we may throw in a condition that the city will reserve the right to do a post-construction, a full build-out traffic study, that still then could require a, a turn lane or some type of additional feature to be added. Because of what that tells you is, at that point, we know how actual traffic is coming and entering the site. You project out how much of the volume is going to go one direction, how much is going to go the other. You won't know that until people actually move in and you see what the traffic patterns are. So we did that, if you remember, with the entrance onto the Ewing property. We may do something similar here when we get to site development plan.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate that. My major concern, though, is that turning right being, being held up there in the visibility. Once the left turns out and the left turns in, or already at the bottom, I think people are going to already see the nightmare they have, and hopefully won't rear-end anybody. But that, coming over the hill, if we can avoid all that backed-up traffic, it would help.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, and I'll bootstrap on that, Scott, I think that's a great point. I like the approach, looking at that for post-construction evaluation. I think that's a, a great point to add in there. I'm thinking of one that was an ongoing chronic issue, was the exit from Hy-Vee onto Devil's Glen. And you would regularly back way up into Hy-Vee, waiting for somebody that was going to turn left and go north out of Hy-Vee, and you just wanted to turn right and go south, and you had to wait and wait and wait. And I would say have the same concern for these folks in this apartment and multifamily, that they would be backed up halfway to the back of the lot, waiting to turn left or right, more importantly, because somebody was waiting to turn left. I was out there today looking at all the sites, and at 3:00 with the school traffic and everything else, or the 5:00 go home, or the 7:30 go to work, any of those times would be pinchpoints, and I think that would be a great idea to have a wide enough entrance and exit to go both ways and not stack it up, so...
And that's actually a, a good point, additional point for the right-hand turn lane. If you're waiting to turn left and someone's coming down the hill and doesn't turn on their turn signal, you have to wait. You have no idea if they're going to actually turn right. But if there's a dedicated lane that they move into, where they can't run into you because there's curb, it really makes a huge difference, so. And being the numbers guy here, I'm thinking, it's great to do the study after the place is built, but wouldn't it be cheaper for everybody if it was done right away?
Absolutely. Ultimately, we can't force them to if the traffic study doesn't indicate that, so. We've got a professional traffic engineer that'll produce the study. Usually, I tend to have a third-party PTU, a professional traffic engineer, do a review of it as well, just so we're a belt-and-suspenders approach, so we'll, we'll absolutely dig thoroughly into that.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question? I assume this is in the Pleasant Valley School District?
No.
Or is this Bettendorf?
Bettendorf.
So with the price of these apartments and homes, I assume it's going to be younger families, potentially with children? Would, as any, we consider what the school busing arrangement would be? We don't want the kids crossing Devil's Glen Road, obviously, so the school bus would be coming down from the north, I suppose, and stop, because I don't, is, or would the bus go into this development?
Ultimately, that is up to the school district. We don't consult, and they don't review their routes with us. Our police department is very much aware of pedestrian accommodations in this area. We've got some unique situations because of the intersection of Devil's Glen and Central. We hear a lot about trying to be able to safely cross that. Unfortunately, because of the existing geometry, it's really difficult. So they're part of this discussion as well. Sergeant Champion, our, our police sergeant, is also on the Bettendorf School Board, so is very much aware of what their solution would be to, to handle this development.
Thank you.
I think that's a great question, Joe, because to my experience, the school buses stop on the main street. They don't go into the developments or into the apartment complexes.
They don't want to back up.
Mm-hmm. So that would create a potential, another safety concern right there on that road. I had a few other concerns, as well as I was studying this and considering previous projects and things we've looked at over the years. And I do thank you, Taylor, for all of your hard work, you gave great information, and to the city staff as well. But when I'm looking at this, and we've got a request for R4 surrounded by R1, every, I mean, three sides and across the street, A1 or R1, all the way around what is now currently zoned R1 as well. And then the closest one is R2, and the next closest one is R3. I just feel like if we go to R4, there's no, well, there's really no stopping what they can, how much they can put in there, again, to a certain degree. And I think that there's been projects that have been brought to us since I have been on the commission, where we're like, why is this R4 in the middle of all this R1? And we're like, well, we can't stop what the options are to go in there now, because it's R4. So I feel, I still feel a lot of trepidations about jumping up to an R4 in this area.
So may I piggyback on that same question?
Please do.
Mark, you said this would be conditional zoning. So when I heard you say that, I'd like to clarify, does that mean that it's conditioned upon this concept plan, and that the project needs to look like the concept plan materially? Or does it mean that it's conditioned upon this project? And if this project doesn't happen, it reverts to the A1? Because we've done both way, we've done it both ways.
Yeah, and I might ask Chris to help me, but I think you may have said two correct statements. I don't know that they were exclusive.
Okay.
So the conditional rezoning is, is, is for this concept and this project. If it is not, if it does not develop, that rezoning does not exist.
This way, too, not just develop, but develop as outlined in this conceptual plan.
Okay.
And then, so then it's, then the zoning then reverts to the R1, would be the way I understand state statute.
So both, both have to, both, both conditions that I outlined apply?
Are both true in this case.
Okay.
And, yeah, to just reiterate, Janessa's point is a good one. Your questions are good, because we have run into this issue before, and we, we don't want that to happen, where you do rezonate to a potentially a, a high-intensity zoning district, and then the project doesn't happen, and then you get something that you didn't want or expect. And that's why this would be conditional, it would be a very specific condition, in that it's got to be in material conformity to the concept plan. It's similar to what was done with the McNamara. There's a, an agreement, and then there's an exhibit to the agreement that is the concept plan. And if it, if that doesn't happen, then it reverts to R1.
I feel much more comfortable with that.
Do you have more? Janessa, sorry.
That's okay. So you're, and you're telling me you feel comfortable with the apartment building still abutting a single-family home right below it?
I feel more comfortable than I did last month.
I would say it is better, but I don't personally feel like it is good. I feel like I would not want, I don't feel like there's, I mean, you've got Duck Creek there, I guess, is, you know, a buffer and space at the side of the sou- southern property owner's home, but it does seem like a drastic change still from one to the next, going R1 to R4, so...
I have a different perspective a little bit. I think that I really appreciate the revised concept. I felt like last time with the apartment building being so high and kind of reboating in that space was not ideal. This is a much better, more conducive plan. I consider the mobile homes across the street abutting to this as another possibility to kind of think of this as a, I, I'm trying to think of what other use could this be if not this? And I think about apartments overlooking a park in a space that isn't getting a ton of development, and I think it could be really positive and really nice. I mean, I, I think I'm just more pleased to see the changes going in the right direction, and I think this could be a really great location for this sort of opportunity for development.
And R3 townhomes are permitted still, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So...
Four in a row, I believe.
R3 does not permit multifamily.
Those three in a row townhomes, right?
Yeah, and I, I think that's the distinction. I'm, we're very specific on the words we use when we use multifamily or townhome. We, as planners, separate those words out.
Okay.
Because in code, they're, they're different uses. So there are three multifamily buildings on this site. Those are the three apartment buildings. Those are multifamily uses to us. The townhomes to us as planners, based on the way we interpret code and, and just kind of the art of our work, is townhomes are, are not multifamily, even though they're rental units, they're not multifamily. So they're a less, they're a less intense use than a, than an apartment building. And I would just point it out, sometimes as we're talking back and forth in the vernacular, we're saying apartment, yeah, the townhomes are rentals, they are, you may conceive them as apartment, but to us, that's a less intense use than a multifamily interior operating doors, you know, that type of thing.
Okay. Janessa, I'll add one more observation. We looked at the original PUD from...
Seventies.
Lot 3, or whenever it was, yeah, the early seventies. If that project had gone through, there would be townhouses in exactly the same location as they're projected on this concept plan. So that was approved, and it just never happened. So I look at that as kind of a, that, that was, could have been there all this time.
I wonder what else would, what else was going on in that area at that time? So I could, there could have been a lot of variables.
Been a lot better than what's there right at the moment.
Well, actually, I raised a little question about that earlier today. I called and said, hey, I see a little sliver, and one of the maps, you'll see it. You can show them where that was, Taylor, just to the north a little bit. There, there, look at that, that little triangle right there. Nope, there, right there. I said, what is that? And how do you get to it? When I looked it up, the Mormon Church, I think, owns it, or something like that.
Oh.
And historically, apparently, it was a shooting range.
Yeah, I think my, my Bettendorf history maybe is a little lacking. This goes back to 1920s and 40s, but there was a gun club of some fashion that was operating in that part of town, and you could still find the skeet pad where they shot skeet, so...
Yeah.
Interesting use, hasn't been there for a long time.
The lead detector will go off in the ground over there, but just, you do, go back and see what things were over the years, and they had a shooting range over there, you know, in proximity, so...
It was actually on the other side of the creek.
Was it?
Yes.
The shooting range was? You over there shooting?
No.
Wow. She had her AR over there, wow, Ann, okay. Yeah. So, no, I think all, all good comments to kind of look at the, the history, how'd we get here? What, what does this look like as far as alternatives for us to, to consider? I'm viewing it kind of a combination of, I'll call it the left and right side here on the, on the P and Z, that I'm seeing a transition, because I, I had the same kind of concerns about the R4 and the intensity of it. That mitigated or softened for me for the fact that it's subject to this plan. Hey, can we, can we have it quiet back there so we can hear what we're doing? Thank you. Appreciate it.
There's a bunch of gun club across the creek from...
But you can tell us about that, we'd like to hear about it. So I'll put you up there. Yep, yep, we'll put you up there. Thanks. So I look at that and, and say, okay, it's somewhat mitigated, I think, by the concept plan that they're obligated to adhere to. So it's not the open door that we would have with wide-open unrestricted R4. The townhomes orientated next to the single-family provide what I would consider a transitionary period or area from the single-family R1 to the more intense use, typical that we would if it went from R1 to R2 and 3 and followed the normal course. And then I also look at the historical use and, and most recent use and say, wow, it's been basically a non-conforming industrial, and is this better? I'd say absolutely. Is it the best we could ever have? Maybe not, but does it make sense to wait 20 more years or 30 for that to potentially happen? I don't know, I don't know my crystal ball. So I see both comments and benefits, but for me personally, I think it's, it's mitigating enough to make it, make it palatable, just as I'm looking at it, so... Others on the commission? Okay, I would love to hear from the audience now, and tell us about the guns back there. But no, really, in all sincerity, history and perspective on it, if you've got it, that would be great to know.
My name's Steve Tomitich. I've lived at 1222 Devil's Glen Road. My property is basically the northern border of your...
You're the next-door neighbor.
Yes.
Okay.
And across the creek, back when I was a kid, in the early, I don't know, 70, 80s, 70s, 60s, there was a shotgun club across the creek that used to shoot claybirds and skeet, whatever. But that's all moved out now. That's gone, or whatever they did with it. But I have a few other points. There has been, I lived there on and off since '60, but I have lived there on now since 2013. I took possession in '13, I lived there in 2014. And since then, there has been at least three, what I would consider major accidents. One came, the car came across, came out of Devil's Glen Road, jumped the curb, went across the parking lot where your ship, where your pumping station is, went across there and ended up down in the creek. And that was, that was back in probably 2015, 16, in that ballpark someplace. So, but no accident, I don't know whatever happened to the driver, and there wasn't any fatalities. In 2020, again, in the same area, there is, underneath, along Devil's Glen Road, there is a, an underground gas company line. And down at the bottom, where your pumping station is out there on Devil's Glen Road or close to that area, there is a large squared-off steel area, it covers up a, a, a valve for this, for this gas line. The car, the last one, in 2020, 2020, I believe it was, or 2021, he hit that steel barricade, ended up taking out a post down there by the bridge, and I don't know whatever happened to that driver. Again, no fatality. The last one, which was a week ago, last Thursday, came down Devil's Glen Road, jumped the curb, snapped off a telephone pole at the base, plus he hit it so hard, they broke the telephone pole again about halfway up, and that car ended up in the parking lot of, well, I call it the barn. These are all, again, no fatalities. The city of Bettendorf is lucky, there has not been any fatalities in this area. All of these accidents are caused by what I consider high-speed problems. I don't expect a policeman to be there 24/7. You can't, there's no way that can happen. But I don't know what the city's view is, but if you ever talked about a speed camera, this would be an ideal place for that, because you've had bad accidents in this area that you have luckily not killed anybody. Now, I, like I said, my property runs the northern border. I would like to see a chain-linked fence. There's, right now, there's a small, there's a steel fence, but through, it runs the length of that borderline. Through time and lack of maintenance, and I don't know who put the fence up, but that fence partially has come down, part of it's still standing, part of it's laid over. But anyway, I'd like to see all that. What I hate to see happen, and for the security of myself, my yard, my lot, for my neighbors up there, these people are going to come with their pets. And these pets are going to want to relieve themselves, or whatever they do. They're going to turn this ba- my backyard into possibly a dog park. I don't want to see that. I would like to see a chain-linked fence put up. You have, these apartments are going to have kids. Kids are going to wander, kids are going to... Kids are gonna wander, kids are gonna play. Kids are gonna end up coming in my backyard or my neighbor's yard. If they get hurt on that property, I hate to see their parents think they're gonna sue me. And in this world, everybody, anybody sues anybody for any reason. Now, I'd like to have a fence put in there from the sidewalk back to the, there's a big post back on the, by the creek. A chain link fence, seven feet tall, maybe. Something that says a permanent, you cannot go over here. That's what I'd like to see. The, that is basically my concerns, my problems, something for you to think about, I hope. But anyhow, thank you.
All right, appreciate your comments and input. Thank you. Others from the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Rick Murphy. Um, could you, Taylor, hold the slides for me?
And I'll note, Rick submitted a few slides that I'll throw on the screen.
Where do you live? Where does Rick live?
Yeah, and while he's pulling those up, again, my name's Rick Murphy. I have a, I live at three eight nine two Deer Trail Road in the Deerbrook section. I wanted to share some of the reasons why I don't think the zoning should be changed. Okay, sorry, done that. But before I did that, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to publicly thank Taylor for all the assistance he's given me. I've lived in the community for twenty-five years. I don't know anything about the zoning process. I didn't get it at all. I called him completely out of the blue several times. He's been very helpful in explaining to me the process. I sent him some submissions he forwarded to the board. I provided some questions. He responded to me. So he's just done a great job. I want to publicly recognize him. And in particular, because as I explained, you know, I don't support the zoning change, so obviously my viewpoint is different than his, and he's been thoroughly professional throughout, despite that.
Appreciate your help, yeah.
And I also want to make, echo the comments that were made at the last meeting regarding the proposed developer. Having lived in this area for twenty-five years regarding the trailer park across the way, it had gotten very rundown. It was an eyesore. I think the trailer caught fire. It was probably a terrible place to live. In the last three years since the prospective developer acquired it, it's total change. It's much nicer. It's improved. I'm sure it's much nicer place to live, and I just wanted to recognize that. But some of the things I want to highlight is I reviewed the comprehensive plan for Bettendorf. And as I see this process here and this project, it's in conflict with that in many places. The plan itself obviously is designed to develop Bettendorf for the next twenty years in terms of housing and other things. But it's not, it's an excellent plan because it doesn't focus just on housing, but how to do that in a way that continues to build an excellent community. In fact, one of the quotes from it is quality of life is an economic development tool. And it highlighted a number of ways that that's true. Most notably, the bike trails. I think it mentioned over forty times in the comprehensive guide, the benefits of the bike trail to Bettendorf. And I would say not all trails are equal. I mean, it's great the development Bettendorf's done in terms of creating like a bike trail along Devil's Glen where you don't have to worry about being struck by motorists on what is an extremely busy street. But then you have others that are even better, like the Duck Creek Parkway, because that allows you to step away from the city and immerse yourself in nature. It's a very special place. It's one of the most tranquil places. And that's why I selected, these pictures are all from the plan. As you can see in the low left hand corner is the entrance to Devil's Glen Park. The picture in the middle is along the bike trail, just a little bit west of where the development's gonna go. And you can see it emphasizes not just that it's a trail off the road, but the very, the green space that it has. As you move along, then, the plan then talks about housing for tomorrow, providing a variety of options. And that's where that picture appears. And you can see it indicates the idea of developing in undeveloped areas. It identified a need for housing, but mostly as you move north in Bettendorf, whereas this is located, obviously, in the southeast corner. It also detailed the number of acreages that was available and the anticipated need. Estimating needing about fifteen hundred acres to develop over the next twenty years. Adding fifteen hundred for other developments and assessing if in need of about three thousand acres. I point that out because it identified five thousand available acres. In other words, it felt there was sufficient acreage for Bettendorf to develop to address its housing needs over the next twenty years. So taking a small six acre parcel out of that mix would not affect the ability of Bettendorf to meet its housing needs according to the comprehensive plan. And to highlight, because the plan repeatedly highlights the benefits, the direct benefits of the bike trails, we should not sacrifice that to meet a general need that can be met elsewhere. And has been addressed in a number of places. Plan came out in two thousand seventeen. Since that time, Bettendorf has done a lot of building in a lot of places. A lot of housing needs have been met. And can continue to be met in a number of places without impacting the special tranquility that the bike paths bring. If you flip to the next one, please? Hopefully, this came out okay. I tried to capture from the comprehensive plan, what are the current uses and the future uses? And what I thought was particularly noteworthy is you look at it, starting in the area from Fourteenth Street down to Central, up to Devil's Glen, and then over to Middle Road. The colors weren't exactly the same, but if you look at the current use map, you see all the green space, that's parks. The blue space belongs to public places like schools. The yellow ones then are single family homes. And you notice an extreme number of, in that box that I pointed out, it is almost predominantly single family homes. Low density is the term used. I noticed the plan is a little different than the zoning things we've talked about because I didn't see it using R one, R two, R three, but rather low, medium, or high density. And I don't know how you can tell on the map, if you follow Devil's Glen Road up from Central, you'll see that's where the current property is. Thank you very much. You'll see that it is currently listed as residential, which I believe is also consistent with how it's been assessed for tax purposes over the last few few years. Now, if you move to the right one, you'll see, again, looking at that box, entirely low density. Now, for whatever reason, most of the green fell off the map along with some of the blue. But it kind of makes it easier. You can see in the lower right hand corner, there's Devil's Glen Park. You go across the street, and then there's that low, that medium density, which is this particular parcel. As to why it's listed as that, I can't tell you because it doesn't say anything in the comprehensive plan. It spends about ten pages discussing development downtown. It doesn't address this parcel all, except on this particular map. I would submit it's probably because that's how it's always been listed. And the question was asked earlier about what was it like in the seventies? I can't speak to that. But I live, if you go up from that parcel to the right, is the Deerbrook Session, which was built in about nineteen eighty-eight or so. Mine was in nineteen ninety. Helsian Drive, I'm not sure when that came in. So probably at that particular time, it wasn't surrounded by residential property because that was before Bettendorf grew out there. One of the things I wanted to point out, though, under the plan, if it's medium density, that's just townhouses. If you have apartment complex under the the comprehensive plan, that moves it to high density. And when I'm saying that, I am relying on, I believe it's page seventeen, which refers then back to these two figures. So this particular plan, because it includes apartments, would be inconsistent with the Bettendorf comprehensive plan as to the future use of this property. The other thing you notice, of course, is I look at that particular box there, that is the only medium density in that particular area. It kind of juts out like a sore thumb or maybe poking someone in the belly. I mean, and it is also the only parcel I could find in that particular area where there's proposal to increase the density. And as I look at it compared to its surrounding neighborhoods, I don't see why that's justified. Question was raised, well, what else would you do with this property? I would submit you should keep it as low density and develop it as a single family home consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And that would also address a couple of things I've just heard here that seem like additional problems to me. Obviously, less of an issue was children having to cross a busy road. And you would not have to then make a turn lane off of Devil's Glen, which worries me a great deal. I echo the comments were made. It's a dangerous road. I've driven that way for twenty-five years, especially in the wintertime. It's a north facing slope. It gets really icy. And to take away one lane there to dedicate it as a turn lane for just this apartment complex, I think is to the detriment of everyone else in Bettendorf. If we could flip to the next slide, please? I have some other concerns here that I'd like to share, and I think one of the reasons I would urge, if you are considering going forward, is to defer it for further study and discussion. And I know this is the second meeting. It may seem like this is being deferred endlessly, but it's a bit of a unique situation in that you have nothing can occur until you get the change from FEMA. Understand that may be coming sooner than May of twenty twenty-three, but certainly it's not going to be coming by May of twenty twenty-two. So there is time to reach out and engage others. This is a fairly recent picture. You can see most of the things on the upper left hand corner have left the property. There's still the cargo container, but you can also see it's on a slope. Now, if you look at the upper right hand corner, you can see how the area that's to develop, that plateau area is up higher than the rest of it, as we've discussed. And then you have the bike path, and in between you have a wooded area, which is down lower. Concern being then, if you've changed that entire area with no green space, just apartment complexes and townhouses all paved, what's gonna happen when it rains? What's gonna happen to the runoff? Will it flood the creek so it's impassable? Or would it fall into that low lying area where it turns into a permanent swampy or somewhat swampy area? Particularly when you're talking about having townhouses or apartments looming thirty-five feet above it, is it gonna block out the sun so it won't dry as much? I also noticed when we were down there that there's a number of other stakeholders in the area. It all appears to lie in the Duck Creek watershed. And there's a sign there indicating that about the Friends of Duck Creek watershed. I'm wondering if there's been engagement with those individuals to see how they would feel that this development in this intense area of nature would affect it. Also highlight that this is a big if you live in there, you realize it's a big animal corridor, wildlife corridor through this. We have a lot of deer and things that move through this particular area. Will that change if you put up an apartment complex looming above the hill with lights and noise? That's another area that would concern me is if this were to move forward as it is currently proposed to change the zoning. If you could flip to the last slide? I had these slides here to highlight the bike bike path and just what a wonderful place it is. I echo the comments that were made at the last meeting. If you haven't been on there, I mean, it's just really an amazing place, especially in the fall when the leaves are turning along the bluffs there and the afternoon sun's kind of cascading across it. It's just really breathtaking. It's one of the most tranquil spots in Bettendorf. I was a little hesitant to mention it to, so the word would get out to everyone. But the challenge will be, it's beautiful when you're looking at the bluffs and facing south, but then all behind you looming up on the hill is gonna be this giant apartment complex. Is that gonna destroy the very character of this area? And I would say also that you know, most people interact with this property are usually not driving down the road. They're on the bike path. There were notices posted about this proposed zoning change along the street, but I don't believe any have been posted along the bike path. It's probably something unusual that normally isn't done. But I think it's appropriate in this particular case because so many people do interact. I've talked to a lot of people who use the bike path, and they're not aware this change is being contemplated. I think it would benefit to get a sense of how the entire community feels to defer any action if you propose to go forward, solicit from the community, post signs there, maybe post something in the library to get a sense of what the entire community feels about this change along the bike path. I think I'll make everyone happy and say with that, I'll probably conclude and pass it along to someone else.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Chris, can you, can I put you on hold for just a second?
Sure.
Just a couple of things in there. I'm gonna maybe clarify just for everybody's benefit before we move on on some of the things that Rick had mentioned. So one was, Chris, from a legal perspective and definition, the U M I. Can you clarify just the definition on that and the zoning relationship?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think there was a reference that that this zoning, the proposed zoning classification is not appropriate in the land use, the future land use map, which is incorrect, as I, as I understand it. Taylor, correct me. U M I R four is allowed in U M I. U M I is the future land use. R four is an appropriate zoning district in that future land use designation.
And I'll note that our, in our zoning ordinance, so this is separate from our hot plan, that's the, our regulations. In the preamble, they do, there is a chart that basically shows the allowable zoning districts and the Euclidean zoning districts, which we're talking about, R one, R two, R three, R four, versus which we also have an optional development character area zoning district, which is a mixed use to perform based zoning district. It does designate all residential districts, actually. R one through R five as that can be contemplated, considered appropriate for the U M I area. So that's, and that's where that exists in our code.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just jump in? First of all, you know, it's rare that we have such a gentleman come and present and and share their their concerns about a project so eloquently and so positively. And I just think that's not lost. In today's society, we don't often get people who present differing, differing views so respectfully. And I just wanted to share that mutual respect that we have for Mr. Murphy. And, and, you know, it was a very kind way to to present, and we really appreciate, you know, his thoughts and we think a lot of them. I would like to point out a couple of things that I would like to clarify. In the U M I, as Taylor and Mr. Curran have said, our comprehensive plan is our, is our initial guide, and it helps us create a zoning ordinance, which becomes a law of the city. In the zoning ordinance that that reflects on that comprehensive plan, we have specifically stated in the preamble that U M I can allow R one, R two, R three, R four, R five, and C one and C two. So a little bit of distinction, if you're just looking at the comprehensive plan, I can certainly understand the conclusion that was drawn. I would point out that, you know, the zoning ordinance that then just become, becomes law based on the comprehensive plan specifies an R four use for this, for a U M I area as being appropriate.
Okay, thanks. And then Brent, maybe can you touch on the water quality and runoff from the site and the concept of developing on the plateau and creating flood zones or wetlands or anything?
Sure. So this is one of the unique properties that's probably left in the city as it applies to our stormwater detention ordinance because it's adjacent to Duck Creek. It's still readily developed, our ability to be redeveloped. This would not require stormwater retention from an overall perspective. And the reason is that because of the flashiness of Duck Creek, when you detain water anywhere near floodplain, the the intent is always to protect properties downstream for stormwater retention. So there is no properties immediately downstream. It's the creeks. In this case, we want to get the water out of there as quickly as we can because any additional water you back up on site increases the chances of that property having flooding issues. So if you read our detention ordinance, it does state that any property that contributes stormwater directly to Duck Creek does not require detention. That's the reason. We will require stormwater quality to be provided, and that's to address the the one inch rain, the everyday rainfall events. So that's the the first flush, if you've ever heard of that term. That's meant to pick up those contaminants that are gonna be on your parking lots, that are the oils, the greases, the grits. Separate that out, detain that small rainfall event for a short period of time, and then release it. So that that will be required as part of this project.
Well, I don't know that the nature, well, I'll say it another way. Based on the nature of what's been there in the past and leaking out of it and everything else, my expectation is that it's likely that the quality of the water coming off the site could be better than what has been coming off the site based on what's been there in the past.
I would expect the quality. Obviously, there will be an increase in quantity and volume, but that applies more to the detention portion than water quality.
So do you have any qualms about the increased amount going into the creek when it's so close to being already at flood level?
They'll have to protect, not not from a flood. I mean, when you're talking about the watershed that Duck Creek is, not even close. You know, thousands and thousands of square miles as opposed to ten acres. So it's a very miniscule overall portion. But the erosion, we will have to monitor. So that, just like any other project, their their outfalls will need to minimize that.
Okay, thanks. Hey, and I think I would also go on Mark's comment. Rick, appreciate your, your politeness and courtesy to us because frankly, it was just a couple of meetings ago, we were called immoral and morons and everything else. So I truly do personally, from the chair, appreciate somebody who's respectful and presents the way you did. It is very much appreciated. So we take a lot of flak, and let's just say it's not always polite. So I very much appreciate that. Okay, anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm James Kankel. I live just to the east of the property you're proposing and north of the trailer court. And the other night, when that accident happened and they hit the phone pole, we're sitting in our living room, and boy, what a crack that was. You hear the squealing, and then all that happened. The lights flicker and go out, come back on and all that. That's kind of scary like that. And like Mr. Tomitich was saying earlier about those cars coming down, they're almost hitting that gas main. If that valve would have been hit and broke, that could have been a major thing down there. And and the traffic too. He hit that pretty good, those cars coming down there. And the traffic too, he hit that pretty good, those cars coming down there. We hear tires squealing quite a bit and then you look out there and it's somebody turning left into the trailer court, somebody coming down over the hill, having to hit the brakes because they can't turn left into the trailer court right away. And that's, that happens quite a bit, but there's been no, they stop in time, but you can hear the tires squealing all the time. And also, like last time, I was concerned about lights in the parking lot. If there's lights in that parking lot, can they shine only towards the parking lot and not like back towards the street or up towards the houses, that kind of thing?
Brent can touch on that with the lighting ordinance?
That is our ordinance. There's a foot candle, it's a measurement of lighting that's allowed, that can't spill beyond the property line. So yes, everything has to be directed interior to the project.
Oh, great, great. And the last thing is, is like the gentleman before was talking about the wildlife down there. Just last week, we caught an 11 deer going through our yard in one herd. And then we get them coming through in packs of two and three and four, a lot of times, crossing the road there into our back property. Then from there, they go into Devil's Glen Park and then who knows, back into where the woods are there too. I just wonder if that's something that needs to be concerned about too, is the wildlife.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mean to be a naysayer here, but I don't know what the current situation is, but Bettendorf has actually been allowing active hunting to thin the deer population down. I live back up to a natural area and there's posted signs warning there's active hunting going around. And when I questioned about it, I don't know if you guys know the status of that now, but they are actively allowing hunters to permit and thin the deer herd because it's overpopulated, so.
I would just, I would say that's bow hunting, there are no firearm hunting.
No, but it's, yeah, but it's bow and arrow and it's, yes, but.
Those are in this area.
And also coyotes, they trap coyotes behind me too. They hire a guy and trap coyotes. So they are actively thinning things in the, in the neighborhood, just so you know.
Mr. Chairman, it occurs to me that there was one comment made that I think I probably should respond to.
Yeah.
You know, there's been some talk about some fencing and things like that, and those are all, all available to be discussed and can be, can be imposed in the site development plan stage, should this project go to that. And I think there are some very logical, reasonable requests made to provide some fencing along those boundaries. That's something that staff can address at the site development.
Great point, yep.
You know, portion of this project and can probably ensure they occur.
Yeah, good. Steve, did you hear that?
I did not.
So what he was saying was, you had mentioned the fence requests. He said, that's something that can be addressed at the site plan stage of this process, should we get to that? And that's something that can be incorporated there and worked out with the developer. So should it proceed, that would be something you definitely want to get engaged with at that process.
Another meeting like this?
Well, the site plan, should we get to that, would come to this meeting for approval as well, but before that, it would go through staff and have multiple reviews and meetings and things in the staff level with the developer. So I'm sure they could make that aware or make you aware of that as well. So worst case, you'd have a notice because of adjacent owner. And I'll mention that too. You had mentioned, Rick, about notice and putting up signs. There's specific code delineation about how we are to deliver notice and to whom, and it's a certain radius. And we can't really go out and notify the world kind of aspect, but there are clear definitions per the code that the city has to follow regarding notice. So that's what they attempt to do with each of the cases that come before us. So, yeah, but stay tuned with the, we get there with the site plan for the fence. That's a good point, Mark. Okay, anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter?
I'm very curious. This slide that is up at the moment is-
Can you tell us who you are? We still got that for the-
Ted Breckenfelder, 2900 Barcelona Terrace.
Great, thank you.
My acquaintance with this area is primarily the bike path. I've lived near Devil's Glen Road for 30-plus years, probably close to 40 years. And so I have frequented this bike path area many times. But you have surrounding deed holders here, identified only as the city, which I don't think is really a surrounding deed holder except as to the park. There would appear to be 20 or 30 surrounding deed holders.
Can you clarify a little more what the question is about deed holders?
Your presentation doesn't include reference to the surrounding deed holders, even though that's what the title says.
They're all listed on the map.
I gather that, but, but what's the focus about the cities, which I believe is intended to be abandoned, right?
Well, the cities is listed along with others like James D. Leader and Reorder's Church.
I'm speaking of the, of the presentation says surrounding deed holders, and then beneath it, it makes reference to the city of Bettendorf.
I think Ted, you know, typically titles in an agreement or on a presentation aren't intended to, to be all-encompassing, that it's the substance that-
But the largest property owner is a trust, if I'm reading it correctly, and I can barely read it. But is that correct?
What, what are you getting at?
The area between the bike path and the natural area that's in the gentleman that just presented a moment ago, because that's what I'm actually going to present in a moment here.
So-
Is that a trust?
It says James D. Leader Family Trust is the title holder of that parcel, so.
So that's the deed holder, right?
I believe so, yeah.
And that would be the largest deed holder.
So should we have had James D. Leader at the heading there? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I was just going to make reference to the fact that the property there, I believe, The gentleman that put the slide up before actually had a picture of it, but it's a unique geologic thing in North America or in the world, according to a River Action thing that's right there.
Okay.
So the gentleman that spoke here, this gentleman in the blue shirt had a slide up, Mr. Murphy, okay? If you bring that up again, I believe there's a picture of this area.
Is that it?
Yeah, it's that stone outcropping.
Okay.
And I believe the River Action thing that's in there makes mention of the fact that there's no other place like this either on the planet or certainly not in North America that shows this geologic progression over a period of millions of years. And so I believe what you're going to do is now sandwich this area in between a higher density development and the developments that are already existing along the higher ridge that I believe would be, is that Central Avenue that intersects with Devil's Glen Road just south of this?
That would be the next intersection to the south, yep.
So River Action obviously puts some money into this, which I was surprised to see as just an easement. I actually thought it was part of the connection of the park system. So why on earth wouldn't you consider acquiring this and expanding the wonderful park that you have across Devil's Glen Road and making an even better connection of the new park that's further up the bike path? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
If you haven't been out there, particularly the city staff, go out there and read what this area is, because it's apparently kind of special.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I ride the bike path all the time over there. I'll have to read that. Yes, sir?
Mike Richman with Townsend Engineering. I've just got a couple of points I wanted to give some specifics on that were either raised by the commissioner or the public. Number one, splitting the townhomes along Devil's Glen into six units, that's workable spatially. We can move them a little bit south and tweak the size so that fits and it's not going to push it to the north at all. And then the townhouse at the northeast corner, based on the existing elevations, that's not going to be more of a high impact because we have to cut that area down a little bit to allow for parking. So that'll either be encompassed by a small retaining wall or something. So the roof line will not be higher than the previous house and probably lower than that. And then we do have green space shown, not shown on the concept, but it will be in the medians between the apartment complexes and between the garages and the townhomes. And then we propose to do the bioswales between the complexes, so we're going to intercept the water as it goes to the southwest, clean it and release it as slow as we can. We're going to try to go under the bike path, but I'm going to have to work with engineering on that and see, because it's in the floodplain, we don't want to put too many structures down there that are going to get flooded out. So I've toyed with the idea of putting bioswales down there, but they just get washed out. So we don't intend on that area to be a swampy area or a collection point, but it'll be conveyed under the path into the creek. And then from the sewer lines down slope is essentially in the floodplain, so that won't be developed at all. The majority of the site will retain those trees in that green space. So it's just going to be the flattish area in the northeast quadrant of the site. So it's not like we're going to wipe everything out to the path. So all that green space will be maintained. And then in terms of the wildlife, we think it's preferable for a wildlife corridor to go under Devil's Glen along the path rather than cross to the north. So we don't think that the apartments would impact any kind of wildlife movement through the area, and if anything, it would direct them to a more safer spot. A lot of communities actually build causeways just like this for wildlife only. So we would like to see the wildlife go under the road rather than across it. And then the developer is also here, if you have any more specific questions for him on that.
You're saying that northeast corner would have a retainer wall?
It would be low. The retention wall would be below grade, so you wouldn't see it. It would allow the building to be lower.
Okay.
And so the profile of the building would be lower, so it would be less of an impact.
I was just wondering about Tomatis' fence. If he had a fence there, the fence would be there, but then it's going to go down.
It'll go down, it'll go down to the wall, which will be built outside of a setback or an easement. So it would be a three-to-one or four-to-one slope to that point, so it wouldn't be like a fall-off point.
Thank you, appreciate the insight. Yep. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this case?
I'm Dave Kempin. I'm the developer on this project. Just want to say thank you, everybody, for the input, a lot of good feedback. And want to just make a comment, like when we, when we looked at this land in the future land use, it was urban medium intensity. And we thought, you know, apartment complex would really fit kind of the space, the natural area with, with the residents in the complex to be able to utilize and it would be, also meet the future land use. So we looked at R4, R5, you know, R4, we were up to 186 units. We've dropped it down since to 126 units. Any further restricting down to like an R3, then it's really kind of deviating from our future land use because urban low intensity would allow an R3. So my thought is if, if going forward or in the past, we wanted to just restrict it to R3, it would have been an urban low intensity versus an urban medium intensity on the future land use map. And just other comments, like putting a fence up, I mean, that's, that's pretty easy to do. And we'd like to accommodate things like that, that are easy to implement in the site plan, once we get further, further into that and the design of it.
Okay, great, thank you. Yep. Yes, sir?
My name's Jeff Windrick. I live in Bettendorf my whole life and I spent many, many good times on the mossy bank and the creek and watermelon patch down there and listening to the gunshots from the gun club. So as a little kid growing up, I've been there my whole life. And this, Mr. Tomatis is my neighbor and his sister when I went to school with him. I honestly think we're lucky, and I'm putting a different hat on now, I'm a real estate broker, I got the property listed for sale. I think we're lucky to have the current applicant, because he's just that, he's an applicant. He's got an offer to buy, but the property's still listed for sale, it's active, we're still getting inquiries. I had a developer guy from Chicago down recently, had an in-town business guy looking to do a mixed commercial use there. I had another guy contact me about trying to continue the currently still-used, pre-existing, non-conforming use, trying to figure out how he could skin around doing that. Can he buy the corporation and continue to make the city unhappy? I obviously am not encouraging him to do that, but the door, people are knocking on the door. Somebody's going to come up with some plan to use this. This one's tremendously attractive, it serves a need. I think we got a developer that's got his foot already there with the property across the street. Maybe this will do so good, he might change that one, who knows? But I just want to say that I'm appreciative to all the thought that's been brought up, a lot of the questions. I know when we negotiated with the city, the easement, this property owns the land where the bike path is. This property owns across the creek, some of the land over there. This is a unique property and when the city did their easement, if you read the easement, it talks about that groundwater. It also talks about that the land and easement would be factored in the density of the development. So as you're talking about, like, it's less and less, technically, if you go back and look at that easement, the city's already said, hey, we're going to use that, use our formula, and that's what you should be able to do density. He's going less and I think that's great. I think the whole thing looks good, but I'd encourage you guys to please move this thing forward and let's make it happen so we don't have other people coming with other concepts that may not be as attractive to the community as a whole. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Last call for the audience. Okay, back to the commission.
I feel like we're ready for a motion.
Well, then please make one, Ms. Ann.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve case number 22-007, subject to the staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-007, subject to staff recommendations. Any other discussions on the motion or second? Anyone on the commission? Nope, okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Case 22-007 is recommended for approval to city council. Okay. Who's next? Taylor is up again. If anybody wants to leave in between now, we're done with that case, you're welcome to do that for a minute. So if you're wanting to stay and enjoy the excitement, you're welcome to do that too.
Mr. Chairman, we might just, we might just let people know that this is just the recommending stage. If they have concerns or want to follow the project further, they're certainly welcome to come as it appears at city council.
Yeah, so-
Those are the first and third Tuesdays.
As Mark's noting, this is a recommending body. This recommendation will go to the city council, where there's also an opportunity for comment and input. That is the deciding body, so.
And this is just the first step.
This is the first step. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, next case.
Okay, next case before you is the case 22-018. This is Fields Edge Edition. This is a final plat located in Pleasant Valley, so this is extraterritorial review. This preliminary plat became before the commission and was approved by city council in 2020. So it's been some time since we've visited this parcel. This is a nine-lot subdivision, including eight single-family lots. The location of this is east of Criswell, so it's on our east of our border, like as I mentioned.
That's better, that's better. Lot better.
The applicant is Ryan Dolan, should mention that as well.
Did you meet my daughter?
Yeah, we did talk a little bit.
Guys, can we get you to go out the back?
I didn't know whether that was a wife. Somebody moseying around with me. I'll cover Scott County. Okay, so the, this is located in Scott County, as I mentioned. The map shown before you is the current zoning and future land use for Scott County. This is partially zoned R1 and partially zoned agricultural general. This is designated as appropriate for residential development on the Scott County future land use map. Bettendorf future land use map on the west side of Criswell shows this, the area, the adjacent area, as urban low intensity. One unique factor in the Scott County future land use map, they have an annexation component to it. This annexation layer designates- This annexation layer designates areas adjacent to urban areas or incorporated cities as to be annexed prior to development. This area is covered in that annexation layer. At the time of preliminary plat, the county contacted the city of Bettendorf for interest in annexation. Annexation was declined due to factors of that we cannot sewer the, or this area. So it was declined and the preliminary plat went through in the county. One unique condition the board of supervisors did put into their preliminary plat was an annexation waiver for the residents in this subdivision. So that will likely go, that will go through with the approval of the county. This will waive any available protest of annexation and if there, that shall become before the city for residents of this subdivision. As mentioned, this is a partially zoned area. The agricultural general area in the county does not allow a single family residential use. This area of the subdivision is Outlet A, which is the detention pond, roughly 2.2 acres, I believe. And then the, across the street in Bettendorf, we have R1 and R2, single family zoning. The final plat has shown eight, eight single family lots accessed by a roughly 550 foot street. It does have a hammerhead turnaround, which is listed as temporary, pending any future development to the east. There are two lots accessed by a shared driveway, Lot 3 and Lot 4. They will have a shared access agreement or shared maintenance agreement for that driveway. No sidewalks are shown on this plat. And that's all for that, I believe. And then staff recommends approval of the plat as shown. It's consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved by commission and council in 2020.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Any other comments, Mark, from your standpoint?
As I play door guard here, I would just say, you know, this is extraterritorial jurisdiction review, it's not in the city of Bettendorf. We're not obligated to annex it, it's just a courtesy review we get to do for the county. The county is the authority in this case.
Yep, thank you. Questions from the commission?
I have one just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
Why was, why were we unable to get sewer to it?
So Criswell is essentially a ridge, everything falls away from it. We have no, because we don't have any city limits east of there, we have no sewer east of there. The closest sewer is a trunk sewer that's several thousand feet west of here. So our sewers are sized that we can handle everything that should be in that basin. So everything in that terrain that can naturally flow down to it. So we can't bring sewer that's going to end up lower on the east side of Criswell to our sewers that are over on the west side of Criswell.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a development across the way that's like.
Yep, we can serve everything to the west side. But most likely, we, we actually had a, I had a sewer master plan done that looked at the potential for sewer-ing the eastern side of Criswell, basically the, the area between Criswell and Leclerc's future annexation limits. And it's a massive number. We're in the 25 million to 30 million dollars in today's dollars to be able to sewer that right now. So most likely never going to happen.
It'll be the land of septic forever, so.
And ultimately it may end up, as Taylor kind of showed in the county's area, there's not much ground east of there that can be readily subdivided because the, the county will require them to be up, get approval through us for annexation just to rezone it. And we can't sewer it, so I highly doubt seeing us annex any of the ground.
All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir.
My name is Christopher Murphy, I live.
Let me get, let me get you on the mic, Chris, so we can get it picked up.
My name is Christopher Murphy, I live just north of that division. Me and Jamie Fredericks, it's right there. So on that final plat that you guys have, can you go back to that picture where it's highlighted blue? That, that red spot right next to us are lots three and four. I don't know, I guess I don't understand why those aren't in the final plat description. Because my well is actually behind that pole barn.
I think it is in the final plat, no?
Yeah, it, it is.
Lots three and four are directly behind my house, there's a red square behind my house for the final plat.
Looks like the outline, Taylor was slightly off on the other graphic.
Oh, it's probably aerial photo shift.
So if you look at the blue, it actually should have extended up right there. That is, that is included in the subdivision plat.
Oh, I see. So I've, I've been working with Ryan Dolan, the whole deal is, is we're supposed to be put on city water and when he starts to build, that's my concern is if that's not in the final plat, then what am I going to do?
That, that is included, there's a flag lot between those two that access down to the street. So Taylor, if you flip back to the.
Yep, that's shown here, those lots, this is the, this is the document that will, this is the final plat. Maps are just addendums. And then this is the property that's not included, but is currently a house.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, like I said, I got the picture, I'm like, that doesn't look right, so.
Nope, you're right, got you, all right, good catch. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope, back to the council then. Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 22-018, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second. Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-018, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, 22-018 is recommended for approval. Okay.
It should be 2211.
It's a 2210.
And it's, we're looking at JJZ Lot Number 1, second edition. This has been replatted already to the extent that it went through this body, it still has yet to go through city council. It's 2.361 acres. Future land use is general industrial and that matches the I2 general industrial zoning district. And it's anticipated for office warehouse building combination, which is a permitted use in this district. Plat that you're looking at is JJZ second edition. That was a replat of lots three, four and five of the JJZ edition. All of the interior easements that were along these lines in this area have been removed, but all the other easements that were bordering or bounding this particular combination of lots on the exterior are still remaining. That includes this drainage area for collecting of stormwater. And we now have a total acreage, or I should say total 102,862 square feet. The proposal here, we have two buildings, 10,000 square feet for this structure, 9,900 square feet for that structure. Two means of entry off of Centennial Court. One directly from the east and then the other coming from the northeast through the cul-de-sac. The parking count for this site was required to have 27 spaces. You do have some interior spaces in here and then you have a total of 48 spaces. Stormwater will be handled and diverted into this detention area, which has already been designed to accommodate water. There is also a water quality mechanism that is in play here to help purify the water as it leaves the site. The tree count should read 14 tree factors and they have them dispersed throughout the area on the exterior. Again, we require that there be no trees planted in any easement area. We do not want to see any interference with the locale. And this is the elevations as indicated. Essentially, you're going to see the same type structure on most of the sides, but there will be two different distinctions. This is the 9,900 square foot building here and this is the 10,000 square foot building here. Staff interviewing this proposal would indicate we would recommend approval. Again, these conditions here about no parking in central court, the water quality designs being approved by our city engineer prior to issuing a building permits, keeping all trees being prohibited, that is, keeping them out of the easement areas. And then once the second edition is recorded, then a new Loma indicating the new subdivision name will be required. Staff interviewing the proposal would recommend approval, I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Mark, anything since publication or the presentation?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I will let you know that you're getting the first of a theme of cases for this.
I noticed, yes, it was.
You're detecting a theme, you are.
Centennial Court Night, yeah, this should, the mayor, I should put that back, and the mayor should declare this as Centennial Court Night. So yes, good, all right. Questions or comments from the commission regarding this case?
I just have one question, Greg. On the, the site development plan, I see two part handicap parking spaces identified by one of the buildings and none by the other building. Do, do those two serve both buildings or are we missing a spot?
I don't know how the plan and on these, how they're situated. I believe our city engineer might be able to elaborate, but it would be based on a, a building standard. And I don't know that it's required per se that they both be adjoining the one, any, both structures.
Yeah, for, for joint share, shared parking like that, it's just a total number. Generally speaking, you will try to put them as close to the access points as you can. They may not have actual public access into that other building, that may be strictly storage. And I think that is the case because you'll see that there's a dedicated sidewalk in front of that building where there is not parking, no adjacent parking to the other building. So they do meet the minimum and as long as these slopes, which this whole area is very flat, are less than the 2%, they could use those as access between them to meet the legal.
Thank you.
Good eye, and I mean, that's like, you're not going to get anything by her tonight, no, good. Others on the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 22-011, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-011, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, 22-011 is recommended for approval. Okay, Greg?
Taylor will be handling this one, that'll be handling a couple of times.
You guys, you guys have got us guessing tonight, okay. I'm guessing you're going to be back for the other Centennial Court then.
For one of them.
Okay.
Okay. The next case before you is 22-016. This is a site development plan located at 2140 53rd Avenue. This is the site, current site of the Genesis Health Plex, the applicant is Genesis. The site is currently a medical office, doctor's office facility. The proposal is to renovate ground floor roughly 6,190 square feet of the first floor and install or construct a emergency department. The only exterior changes existing or proposed for this renovation and site development plan are a ambulance bay and canopy on the west side of the building. That'll be located here. This is being, this has been deemed, or staff contends this is a significant change in use or meets our threshold for a change in use, thus requiring a site development plan review by the planning commission and approval by city council. The future land, land use for this area, this is located in the community commercial future land use in Bettendorf. This is on the border of the city of Davenport, just to the west. The city of Davenport, the adjacent property in the west, due west, is located in the regional commercial future land use designation on the Davenport 2035 plus plan. Similar land uses. The zoning for this area is our C2 zoning district, just to the west. That's community commercial zoning district. Just to the west in Davenport, the, the area is zoned commercial office park zoning district. To the south, across from 53rd, I add, there is a neighborhood commercial and also a community commercial. And then we have more residential R2 developments. The applicant has submitted, staff wanted to see the traffic flow from this renovation of emergency room. Currently, the site is accessed off Falcon Avenue. This has two, currently has two access points. So a traffic flow, this is an emergency vehicle traffic flow, would enter, could enter on either access point to the west side of the building. The northern northwest parking lot was approved. An expansion was approved last year, 2021, it added roughly 61 spaces. This, and also an interior accessway connecting the west parking lot and the east parking lot. So this was, this is added and it's not reflected in the aerial. Falcon Avenue and 53rd Avenue does have a signalized, is, is a signalized intersection and is currently compatible with a traffic signal preemption for emergency vehicles. And Falcon Avenue does go north to 56th Avenue, which is a T-intersection with a one-stop sign for any traffic heading north on Falcon. The exterior renovation contemplated for this site development plan is the ambulance bay in question. So this is the, it's a little hard to see, but I can zoom in here. This would be, I believe, a back end ambulance bay. So this would, they would lose a few parking spots and then there would be a canopy over this area for dropping off emergency patients. The proposed use of an emergency department is defined as a hospital per our zoning code. A hospital use is a permitted use in this, in this district per our permitted use table. The expansion of that parking lot with 61 spaces is, adds sufficient parking for this use and this use actually does not add required parking, if anything, will lower it. The floor plan as shown on the screen. You can see it's all on the first floor and has, I believe, 11 patient rooms or treatment rooms, the nurse station and other rooms, rest station room, and then the entrance, which is the ambulance bay is located up here. So things you'd find in an emergency room. Staff has reviewed the use, the compatibility of the use and the effects of parking for the site. We've also reviewed the traffic flow for the site and access points. And we've deemed that they all meet our standards per code. Thus, staff is recommending approval of this site development plan and take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything to add? Nope. All right, commission questions, comments regarding this matter?
I have a lot of medical questions I'd like to ask about this, but I don't think there's anybody here that can answer.
Got your insurance card? It's the first question.
I believe you do have a applicant or representative in the audience.
Well, I guess my questions are, as a potential user of your facility, I appreciate the fact that it's a lot closer to home. But I'm, I'm just curious, I guess as a potential consumer, all the ancillary services that a hospital provides are not available there. So I would view this as maybe a triage. So I would view this as maybe a triage facility, and then I am moved elsewhere. And this has nothing to do with the rezoning, I'm just.
Well, I'm kind of curious too, so thanks, yeah.
My name is Kevin Ross, I'm with Genesis Health System in charge of all their construction. The reason we chose this location was we have a lot of loyal Genesis customers that will drive by Unity Point in Bettendorf there and come to our east campus. So we decided we would look at the Bettendorf market. It is, we will not keep patients more than 23 and a half hours. So, I mean, whether it's stomach pain, whether it's something minor, scrapes, bruises, whatever, something more than a convenient care, we can take care of you there. If we cannot take care of you there, we will transfer you to our east campus and take care of you there.
Okay. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Other questions or comments from the commission? Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Amy Cavazos. I'm here representing Leclerc Manufacturing. I'm one of our, one of our owners, and we own and operate the Monarch Kitchen and Bar, which is immediately next to this building here, yep. And we're very concerned about the disruption for our customers from the sirens and the flashing lights of the ambulances. We have a whole bunch of east-facing windows that are opened up to the entire dining room in addition to the outdoor patio. So I just was here today, we just found out about this yesterday. So I'm just here today to express my extreme concern regarding that. I think we offer a unique dining experience. Our customers expect a certain level of service and experience when they dine in our facility. And we're still new, so we're trying to get our feet under, under us as well and definitely have a lot of concern about the, the lights and the additional noise from the ambulance bay. It probably could have been about any other spot of that building except for where it's being proposed and not had it have an impact. And from, for earlier discussion about the fence and stuff, I'm learning a lot, but, so maybe this isn't the right time. We do think that, I was over there today looking, but additional greenery, perhaps a line of evergreens or something on the property line that would block the view of the lights and dim the sound of the sirens would be maybe a compromise from our perspective, but that's all I had. Thanks.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Just a note, we are at the site plan stage of this one, so. And this is a little unusual because it's an existing use and because of the change, intensity of the change, it triggered a new site plan, but it didn't go through the process we were experiencing with the last one. So a little unique, but I think I saw him nodding, so maybe negotiating back there, you guys can split bush prices or something. So catch him on the way out. All right, yes, sir.
Hi, Ted Breckenfelder again, 2900 Barcelona Terrace. This is actually the site that invited me to the meeting at 5:00. There were two posted signs, one on 54th and one on 53rd. Neither one was actually visible from the busy intersection, which is, is that Falcon that goes by the McDonald's? And my recollection from watching an earlier planning and zoning meeting is that there is improper roadway, pedestrian sidewalk signals and so forth. And I'm not aware from the brief presentation that was done that any of that is slated for correction.
Brent, any feedback on that? I'm not sure.
From a previous presentation, you were saying?
Yes. I walk this neighborhood on a daily basis, so I'm fairly familiar with all of the development that's been done. And as I said, I happened to watch a previous planning and zoning meeting where I believe it was disclosed that this is not a correctly done intersection. And, and I have actually experienced that. You don't have a pedestrian walkway from the Genesis facility to the McDonald's. And in fact, if you look at the McDonald's, the ADA access requires a person in a wheelchair or with a walker to actually walk the length of the McDonald's and go in across the drive-through. So that would have been something that would have been up to the Planning and Zoning Commission in the past as well. So I think this is a very bizarre intersection for as busy as it is. And I know that none of the neighbors that I'm familiar with are aware that there's an ambulance facility being proposed for this. And certainly, the proposition is this going to compete with the existing Bettendorf Hospital? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Yeah, like I said, we've got competing medical facilities all over the place. It's not really a change in community use, but, but that is, I'm just very surprised that this one seems to be flying under the radar here between the two Centennial Court things. And then, more importantly, as someone who intends to walk this area, if I do, I mentioned I walk as far as the unique geological thing that I brought up before. It's, it's very difficult to cross this intersection. And you have businesses that are suffering lack of pedestrian traffic as a result of that. And you certainly have a restaurant member here that might like to have a little better access from the, the south side as well. So take that into consideration, and city staff, you need to up your game a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Ted. So the notice requirements, that would have been within so many feet of the proposed location?
That's correct. So we do a courtesy letter, courtesy mailing. We also have the signs posted. We also have a city website that is very available, newly updated with all the ADA capabilities built into it. I am not aware of a meeting where we discuss this intersection as somehow being faulty or failing.
I think what he's referring to would predate your tenure here.
There was something to do with the construction of Falcon Avenue, and it was accepted.
I'd say that was even predating me.
As a city street, but it wasn't originally designed as a city?
Correct. Falcon was built as a private street.
Right.
The city agreed to take it, I think the year I started, I think it was 2015.
The width was not in compliance, that was the.
Yeah, that was previous decision. But in looking at it, yeah, we do, we do not have pedestrian crossing there. We have full pedestrian access down at 18th Street.
18th Street.
I'll have to check to see why that wasn't done when I went in.
Ted's coming back.
Yeah, I just, there are instances like this throughout the city. In other words, across from Palmer Hills Golf Course, I was just there within 48 hours or so. And US Bank doesn't have a sidewalk in front of their facility there, and there's new development all around there. So at some point in time, there should have been a sidewalk there, just like there should be a pedestrian crossing at this intersection. And it's not been done, and it's not been corrected for a period of years.
Well, there, there may have been a reason, Ted, that I'm not aware of.
There absolutely would have been. So the majority of the places that have gone in and don't have sidewalks predated our ordinance. We've got entire areas, the whole eastern half of the town, south of 53rd and east of Middle Road, does not have sidewalks in their neighborhoods. We do have a CIP program, so we spend about a quarter million dollars a year going around and updating ADA just across the city. Ultimately, we cannot afford to go in and fill every sidewalk gap that exists in the city. That, that will never happen. We'll continue to chop away as best we can, but ultimately, we cannot afford that. Now, something like this at a major intersection, I'll look back to see why it did not go in. And if it's something we can add, we'll try to get that in a program.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, there is pedestrian.
Yep, 18th Street is fully ADA accessible. It is 400, and I just checked, 475 feet down the road. So it is, you know, still a walk, but yes, it is fully available to cross safely.
Ted's coming back.
Maybe this is the wrong forum for my comments, but I, I think there's a tendency for the Planning and Zoning Commission not to get the full story here. And the, the issue is that there is no pedestrian access. There's a bus terminal, you know, in other words, a, a bus stop on Falcon Avenue there with no sidewalk accessible. In other words, a person riding what's supposed to be an ADA accessible bus has to use the street and the parking lot to access that facility, and that's been there for years.
So Ted, that went in at their request and working with Genesis because of the clientele that they have at that building that frequently used our bus. So instead of having to have them wait on the sidewalk, we gave them an option and a safe option to do so within their parking lot.
But there's no sidewalk access to the location?
I just answered that question, Ted. We cannot afford to go around and fill every single gap. It's not going to happen. We'll keep working as best we can, but we, we spend a quarter million dollars a year on sidewalks, and we have gaps across the entire city.
Bike paths and sidewalks are more important for the purpose of the pedestrians using them than the utilities overhead, and that's the premise that you need to start with.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else from the audience with regard to this matter? That will come back to the commission.
I would like to see if the gentleman from Genesis could circle back and answer Amy's questions about whether it's possible for what they're proposing to be moved to the other side of the building so it doesn't affect her business.
Or provide screening.
Or provide screening or buffering.
Or maybe, just some clarification. I suspect that you're not going to be coming into this facility with lights and sirens, because if somebody's that ill, you're taking them to the east campus.
That is correct.
My guess would be you're going to be going out of there maybe with lights from somebody that came, walked in, or.
That is a true statement.
Okay.
Medic, I mean, you know, over at east campus, they come down the street all the time. Usually the sirens aren't on, sometimes they are, and maybe just the lights. So if you're really critical, they will not take you to this emergency department. And then, yes, we can certainly look at some, doing some screening on the west side.
So but site development, this is site development planning, right? So that's when you decide what side of the building works best for that. Why did you choose?
Because our main entrance for the rest of the building is on the east side, and I don't want the ambulance traffic coming in at the main entrance, so.
I can see how that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then screening and buffering, is that something they would discuss now or later?
Yeah, I think certainly the commission could request an additional condition, and that condition could be that, that there is screening and buffering put in place, and that could be added to your recommendation, and that recommendation could be carried to council, and staff can work out the particulars. That would be totally appropriate.
Thank you, Mark. I would be in favor of that.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay. With that comment, are we ready for a motion?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 22-016 with, how do you say it, Mark?
An additional condition for screening on the west side.
Thank you, additional. Condition for the screening on the west side.
And subject to staff.
And subject to staff recommendations, yes, all of that.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-016, subject to staff recommendations with the additional criteria of additional screening. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 22-016 is recommended for approval. Back to Greg?
Back to Centennial Court.
Site, Mr. Chairman, is one that is one lot north of what we saw last month when Silverthorne presented their building plans. Essentially looking at coming in State Street again, and we've already seen this development here. This one is directly across from it. And State Street is the main access again up Centennial. This is, lot is 35,121 square feet. And General Industrial, again, the same land use. Zoning is I2 General Industrial District, and what's proposed is a three-unit office condo building. And that is a permitted use in this district. It is lot 10 in the JJZ addition. As you can see, highlighted here. Easements on setback area are on either side of the side lot lines are 12 and a half feet. To give you combined setback area, 25 feet. We again have the same easement area here for the drainage that goes through the east portion of this parcel. And that area, of course, is delineated to be free and clear of any type of development. The building right here, 6,400 square feet that is proposed with the means of access to different bays that are within side the structure. And sufficient parking with the combination of interior and exterior parking is provided by the applicant. There are also four trees that are required for the site, and that count is met. We've got a dumpster location right here. And again, the drainage with the proper water quality element is added, and then ripraped all that going back in here to prevent a great deal of water from getting into that area untreated to an extent, but also making sure that the amount of water that's draining in is going in at a regular pace as opposed to it being just sheet flowed into that area. And this will give you an example of how the building would look facing south. And these are the entry points into the structure. Staff in reviewing this proposal would recommend approval. Again, the condition for no parking on Centennial Court is in effect, and the evaluation of the water quality design for the site is also something that needs to get completed through the city engineer prior to any issuing of building permits. And again, the prohibition for planting of trees in easement areas is in effect. Staff supports approval of this project. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Mark, anything? Nope. All right, commission, do we have any questions or comments with regard to this?
I just see it noted that planting of trees can't go in the easement areas. I can see how that makes sense. Are there still a requirement for trees in the, in this zoning area?
Yeah, four, right? You have to have four, but outside the easement area.
Yeah. I mean, we.
So on the site, but not within the.
They can, we've, we've always permitted trees, and that's something that's in the ordinance to be placed on the site in different locales as long as they're meeting an overall tree factor. So they don't necessarily have to be placed exactly in the streetscape or into a buffer yard or in the parking area.
Just some somewhere.
They can be situated differently, yeah.
Thanks for clarifying.
Others on the commission? Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Back to the commission.
I recommend approval of case number 22-017, subject to staff recommendations.
Ooh, that was a tie. Do it again. Give it to Anne. All right, second Anne. All right, we have a motion and a second by Anne to approve case 22-017, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Thank you. 22-017 is recommended for approval. Are we switching again, Taylor? Man, you guys are messing with our head here.
Keep the two of them awake. Get our steps in. All right. The next case before you is 22-019. This is also in Centennial Court, 3262, Centennial Court. This is a site development plan as well. The applicant is Kyle Fitzmyr. This is lot seven of JJZ addition. The proposed use is a location for his business, Fitz's Fence and Deck. And the proposal includes a 8,160 square foot, one-story light industrial WIC building. The current zoning is I2, as mentioned in our previous case. And the future land use map shows this as industrial. This whole subdivision is, was located in the floodplain, but has effective Lomas which have brought it out of the regulated floodplain through fill. The site plan contemplates a workshop and indoor storage that will encompass 6,240 square feet of the building. The remainder, 1,920 square feet will contain an office. There's no sidewalks in this, and this is an industrial area, not trying to highlight pedestrian access. The site plan shows 10 parking spaces, which meets the minimum parking requirements for a construction yard as this use is defined by our zoning code. One space per eight hundred square feet. The elevation plant, elevation drawings are shown. This is, the lower one is the, looking towards the north, that'd be the entrance. And then you'll have three bays on the east side of the building or garage bays, and then a larger garage bay on the west side and the rear of the building with windows. The floor plan for the office, which is the smaller area contemplated, shows a few offices, a kitchenette, shop room, shop bathroom and office bathroom, storage closet, and then a display area for the applicant's fences, fence products. The rear, larger indoor storage workshop area, part of it is cold storage for lumber materials and the rest is a heated workshop for truck tool maintenance. The staff did review and asked for a few amendments to the plan for turn radius in this, the end of the cul-de-sac. That was amended and there's proper separation for 24 feet for trucks turning into this location. So they can enter off Centennial Court and wrap around and vice versa. The parking area is located to the east of the building and there is an ADA accessible parking space as required, located off the office and then into the sidewalk leads to the front entrance of the building. Staff, after reviewing this, staff recommends approval of the site development plan with the following conditions, that the landscaping requirements after construction be met per our adopted landscape code or handbook. No parking on Centennial Court. And then water quality designs as water detention is not required in the site. Water quality designs are required to be approved by the city engineer prior issuance of building permits. I can answer any questions.
All right. Thank you Taylor. Mark, anything since publication of presentation?
No.
All right. Questions or comments from the commission, please? None? Okay. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? None? Come on Kevin. All right, back to the commission.
I'll move to approve case 22-019, subject to staff recommendation.
A second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-019, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. 22-019 is recommended for approval. Take us to 22-020 and here they switch on us again.
It occurs to me, Mr. Chairman, that we may work on our agenda arrangement next time. It's been a while since I set a lineup. I spent a lot of years coaching baseball and you know, maybe I could.
They're getting smoother though in the switch though.
Done a little better job at this. And I just want to apologize to my staff. That is completely my fault. And we'll do better next time.
But have you noticed how much smoother it's gotten? At first it was pretty cumbersome and now they're just like well oiled. So you guys are, you're trainable. Good. All right. Let's go Greg.
Mr. Chairman, this is case 22-020. It involves the parcel that is remaining here in the JJZ second addition, the one that's left to develop. And that is lot number one. It's 1.39 acres. If your land use is an urban medium intensity and the C2 zoning community commercial district has been in effect for about, well, it's over two decades now. What's proposed is two units for a restaurant and then retail on the locale. And we've got the addition here, the Tanglefoot Crossing addition. This is the replat of it. And this is lot number one. That essentially is going to house this. Currently, we have the multifamily development here on lot two. And the ownership, or I should say, the designation on the lots was separated out as part of this plat. And it was always anticipated that this area would tend to be more of an intense commercial type use. And what we have with this structure here as proposed is restaurants on either side, a drive up window. We also have a portion of this which is one way. For traffic purposes. These areas here are two way. And there will be designations with signage to indicate as such that the traffic flow will go certain directions within the confines of the site. Also, there is a, an aspect to this in the plating where there is a drainage easement that is going to be renamed as a storm sewer easement on both the west and south sides of this site. And the parking was sufficiently met within the site by at least, I believe it needed 89 spaces, that generated 95 spaces for the particular uses that are here. This is the dumpster location right there. And also, we have as part of this, a recreational trail connection on this locale. I should say connections to that area that will come from Devil's Glen Road. This is the, to give you an idea of the elevations, this is the westmost facing site here. This is the eastmost facing site. There would be a second story up here at this location. And this is the view looking from the north to the south. And this is the view looking from the northeast back at the building. And as you can already see within the unit structure, the two restaurants and then the retail in the middle here. And then this being a portion here, the drive through area of the restaurant. Unit here. Staff in evaluating this proposal would recommend approval. There were two considerations. One, as I mentioned, the plaque correction, removing the reference to all drainage easements on the south and west sides of the site and replacing them with storm sewer easement labels. And then the placement of larger caliber trees because of the confined nature. As you note, there are many utilities on the streetscape sides here within this potential proposal, making it not possible to plant on the streetscape areas, trees on either the west or the north sides of this site. So in essence, we are asking for larger caliber trees to be placed within the site development of itself in the drive areas and the vehicular use areas. So we recommend approval of this plan with those two conditions. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Greg. Mark, anything from your perspective?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just highlight a couple of aspects of Greg's presentation, which was done very well. I would note that we did have discussions in the pre-development process of the meetings with the developer. And we asked for, although we cannot require it because we don't have overlay district for architectural consideration here, we did ask for elevations that showed the fenestration, the architectural detail. And we were trying to kind of create a corridor between Crawford and Tanglewood and something that blended the two. And we were very satisfied with what was provided to us. I just wanted to make sure the commissioners are aware of that value add, if you will, from staff and our partnership with the developer here. That was much appreciated. And it's a long night and now I'm losing my track of thought. Another thing I would point out is that I would, I would dare to say if this project were brought to you three years ago, it probably would not have the patio space and the drive through. So we're seeing a new, a new pattern of development. And just to draw your attention to that, I would note for the developers' edification and for this board as well, when we have those additional uses, especially the patios, those do impact the building code, not, not really at the planning level, but the future building code and things like egress for patrons and bathroom counts and things like that. So those patio spaces do get counted like interior space, if you will, in terms of passive egress and bathrooms and other, and other building code things. Not really on your docket today, but just so that consideration is out there.
Do we have a seasonal factor for that? So in the cold weather, it doesn't count, but in summer it does or?
I'm kidding.
You got one of those?
You're speaking like a developer.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh oh, uh oh. So, no, appreciate that Mark. Questions and comments from the commission regarding this case?
I'm curious about access from the road. I couldn't quite get a handle on that. So I just wondered what.
There is a, there's a single access from Tanglefoot. It was actually, that is, that location was established with the original plating almost 20 years ago. So it's just beyond the start of the turn lane, which is where we'd be comfortable with.
So just.
Start of the left turn lane for westbound.
Access on Devil's Glen?
On Tanglefoot. No, there is no access on Devil's Glen.
So.
Which is a good thing.
Greg, you talked about some one way traffic. And I see that the west side and the south side, if I got my bearing right here, yeah, would be one way traffic. So from a practical, and maybe we have to ask the developer, from a practical standpoint, how do you stop the two way at those two points from continuing around the wrong way of the building?
My question exactly.
Well, we've discussed it. We do not have control over the internal design of this locale.
Yeah, Greg, I can probably answer that right. There is no way. You know, people are going to go whichever direction they're going to go, no matter how you design these.
That's my thought as well. So going with that assumption, then?
They did add a couple of things that I spoke with their engineer about. You know, they narrowed down the width on the west side. So that is not wide enough for two way traffic, which hopefully will discourage people with some additional signage. And then the same thing at the southeast corner, you can see how that island kind of necks down the width of that, again, trying to discourage people and give them a view that something is changing in that corner. But yes, ultimately, it is private and you know, pavement markings and signage are acceptable. I mean, that's how we denote public streets, obviously a little different, public, private. But you know, they do follow all the standards, but we did have the same concern.
And so the, the drive ups on the south side of the building and the, the lane width there from clearing the parking spaces is 24 feet, but you're going to have cars queued up along the building. And you've got a 18, which is a small parking place. You've got an 18 foot. So with a car in place, say eight feet wide, I don't know. How do they, how do you back out of those?
So you got to think about a standard two way aisle is 24 feet. So if you have cars that, you know, if you're backing out, that you're only supposed to be, that's how they're designed, a 12 foot lane to be able to back in and out.
I'm with you, but there, there the traffic's typically moving. Here, they're going to be semi parked waiting for the, for the drive up.
You may be waiting for someone to come out. Now, I also think that south side is going to be almost exclusively employee parking.
That would be a smart move.
Mm hmm.
Yep. All very good catches, all discussions that we've had internally as well.
I, I would think that on the east side. That that pier curb. Along the building could come out even farther to block that lane so that cars.
Aren't encouraged.
Well, cars turn into Starbucks every day on the right in, right out. So.
They can take a look at that. Ultimately, we also got to make sure that they can get trucks around the site.
Yeah.
Emergency services, deliveries.
Yeah.
Makes you feel any better, we're actually going to be installing delineators across the, at these two right in, right outs while you mention that. So we're going to be physically blocking those coming here in a month or two.
Oh man.
At Quick Star. Are you one of them?
I didn't say that on purpose.
One of the, the middle road and then the Quick Star on Devil's Glen. We're going to be physically separating traffic from those.
That's great.
Good.
I agree. This looks like a really nice building.
Yeah.
Be a nice addition to that corner.
Absolutely.
I know there was some concern from the neighbors when you put up the apartment buildings that there'd be a gas station there.
Yeah.
They should be happy.
They're not here.
The tenants will be super thrilled about this.
Well, and I get, I get the reality of open space and the, I mean, we've had discussions about the kind of perpetual need for drive through in our new world. So I mean, I get it. It just, it's, it's going to be a little cumbersome on the east side of the building or south side of the building there.
That was premature.
And then I, you know, just had to look, it's like, where do you put the snow too? I mean, if you got it all parked out and everything, where's, where's all the snow go?
That's how you keep the cars from going around.
Snow barriers.
Some of those parking spots aren't available.
Yeah, all the snow will go off the edges of the parking lots. They, they still have quite a bit of green space on the south side.
Or east, west end.
On the west as well.
West end.
Yep. You just have to make sure that obviously that with your contractor that they get there before the businesses start occupying. Since they're mostly restaurant and drive through, I don't see an issue with that generally. Contractors are there early in the morning. But yeah, they can push off that south side.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the commission? How about in the audience? Anybody with regard to this case?
I just wanted to say it's nice to be here without the need for a police escort.
You know, funny you say that. We had a conversation earlier and I'll just take in a little editorial. I said, I've been doing this since 2007. Okay. So almost 15 years I've been on P and Z. And I mentioned to some other friends this week, I said, this is the first time, three times in 12 months, we've had the police here to kind of calm the crowd. I said, never before in my 12 years have we needed to do that. And in this past 12 months, three times. So it's a state of our current conditions in the world. It's a sorry statement, but it's nice you noticed that. So yeah, I mean, it's been, it's been a crazy year. So.
And we have had controversial cases during those 12 years.
But never the threat of safety. Yeah. I've not been escorted to my car previously to this year. So yeah, welcome, welcome to our new world.
Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Taylor's the new guy. So we're going to blame him, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So.
You're kind of new yourself.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case number 22-020, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-020, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Case 22-020 is recommended for approval. And here goes the switcheroo. Maybe we should all, well, I have to say here, but you guys can change signs maybe.
Exactly. I don't want to confuse persons.
Okay. Two cases and two people out in the audience. Okay, so.
I'm with him.
Our last case, case 22-023. Is a minor change to a PUD plan. This PUD, this location is 3403, the one building located 3403 to 3451 Devil's Glen Road. The location is highlighted in blue. This is just east of Devil's Glen Road and north of Town Point Center. The proposal became as a building permit. There's a vacant unit here. The proposal is to put a smash pizza, pizza restaurant in one of the units. After reviewing the building permit, staff realized the PUD plan currently adopted by the city, which has been approved by this commission and council, had not been amended since 2009. And the current PUD plan designates this building to be retail services or commercial retail. So staff is proposing to amend that PUD plan to, to first analyze the effects of the uses current and proposed and amending to allow other commercial uses such as restaurant at this location.
Would that be for the entire building or just this address?
That, that address is the entire building. That's the range.
Okay, so it's for the entire build. Okay, the 34.
The area located here is that.
For that entire block. Okay.
I'll kind of have to walk through this. It's. So the applicant is Bruce Grell. Bruce Grell is the owner of that building. Is currently a condoed out, but it's considered lot one and lot two of Devil's Point condos. The original PUD plan was approved in 2007. And I can walk through that in just a second. Just give you a little bit more context. The future land use of the location is urban medium intensity, as is the surrounding area. The current zoning district is PUD, as is across the street. The planned unit
The planned unit development districts come before the commission and council. They can, basically, they, they can. They're a zoning district, but that requires a site plan, and then a detailed planned unit development plan that can contain multiple uses, multiple intensities. They're kind of the wild card of the zoning. It's a zoning district, as long as all of those analysis and all those metrics are, you know, maintained at site. Any changes at that site need to be amended. If it's a minor change, there's different thresholds in our ordinance of what kind of changes can be, and how that is applied to the site. So if this was to be torn down and changed totally, that would be a major change of the PUD plan. Staff contends this is a minor change based on the, the changes in use, and some of those uses have already occurred over time. So this use would be, we're trying to basically clean up this PUD to make it more conforming going forward. The original PUD plan shown is, this is actually, this is dated 2005. It contemplated the current building, shown as a commercial retail. Two more commercial buildings, which do exist, off of Town Point Center. And then it had a multifamily residential complex to the north and east. That complex, then, two years later, was amended. And you have what you have today, which is the Villas of Devil's Glen. And this is the current plan for that with parking. You have the, like, a better term, L-shaped building here, and then additional parking, which is adjacent to Crawford and Healthy Habits. Kind of, there's a, I believe stairs that go down there for parking for the, the apartment, the tenants at that, that location. This is the building in question. These are the current tenants at that building. Coffee Hound, Peaceful Style Boutique, Morton Community Bank, Peach Wave Yogurt, Nail Salon, and then one vacancy, and then the proposed Smash Pizza. The Coffee Hound, Peaceful, sorry, the Coffee Hound, the Peach Wave, and the Smash Pizza would be considered restaurants under our zoning code, and so they don't conform with the PUD plan. The parking spaces at this location total 59 spaces. There has been multiple iterations of the design of the parking spaces. They originally were not slanted, or angled parking spaces. That was installed or repainted some years ago. I believe it was to facilitate a safer ingress egress for parking, the people parking. There is a drive-through for the Coffee Hound. Kind of going back to your, the previous case. A little easier to back in and out. And it is one-way, I believe, one-way, supposed, supposed to be one-way, going around, counterclockwise around the building. The proposed space with the current uses, so looking at the site in total, would require 53 parking spaces per our off-street parking schedule. The current spit, the current area has 59 spaces, so this would meet code. I would note, though, there is a 1,200-square-foot unit that remains vacant. So we, staff contends and recommends that be conditioned, for a condition approved for this approval of the PUD amendment, that that space cannot, the use of that space cannot go over that 59 space requirement. It's pretty integral, so another restaurant could not go in here. That's kind of something more like an office, or a number of other uses, based on our off-street parking schedule, could go there.
I'm gonna pause you just for a second there, Taylor, because it's a, I wanna follow your, on that. So I went out there today and looked at it, and the, the two parking spaces on the south, and they look like kind of add-ons later. I can't imagine they were, and maybe they were a part of the original PUD plan, but if, if, if in fact it is a one-way, and it's striped for that way, I guess I could see the argument that those are valid spaces. But if there's any sense that that is in fact a two-way drive, and there's nothing that I recall seeing coming in off of Town Point that says, oh, don't come in this way, you know, to the west, with parking places there, there's not a two-car width there in that drive.
Next to the two stalls.
I'm Bruce Grell. If you want me to answer any of those questions, I can.
We're, we're at the informal stage now, so go up to the mic and let's do it in between. We'll get her done sooner, maybe, yeah.
Go to the mic now.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, the two parking spaces you're looking at, there actually, there is a car width there. There's more than two car widths.
So you could park there, parallel to the building, and still get by with two cars?
Yeah. Yeah, it's done frequently by the people in the nail salon. And actually, right now, you can't see it on, we don't have a satellite view. There's a, there's a truck and a trailer parked in those two lot, spots, and you can drive right, right through it, no problem. A snowplow can go through if there's two cars parked there also.
But there's room for essentially three widths of vehicles there, then?
I don't know, I've never tried to put three through there, I've never had to, so.
No, what he's saying is if you have two cars parked next to the building, then if I'm driving east and Roy's driving west, we can pass right next to those two places.
I don't know, that I don't know about.
That's what I was getting, I didn't state it clearly enough, but it feels, it feels like it should be well-marked as a one-way, like, do not enter off of Town Point, because with, if those two spaces are utilized, there's no way two-way traffic can, can function there.
Yeah, it's, Mr. Chairman, it's, I'm measuring it right now, it's 23 feet across, so it is wide enough for two.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it makes sense to have one-way circulation, but even today, when I was over there looking at everything, there were cars going both directions, and it was uncomfortable.
We're in the same situation that you're looking at, at your previous new construction, that's gonna go on on that corner, where you can put as many one-way signs.
And they're gonna do it, yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, there's, there's already a one-way, a do-not-enter sign going into our drive-through for the Coffee Hound. No, people, people who go in there every day don't pay any attention to it, so.
Yeah.
And it's actually striped on the, on the concrete, and there's a sign, so that's one of those.
Yeah. Well, I get, from my perspective, just the, really looking at any additional user and the increased pressure on the parking, because it, it is tight there all the way around if it's utilized, so. Thank you, appreciate that input. Don't go away, we might need you, so stay there, we'll be, we might get back to you, so go ahead, Taylor.
And I believe the initial site plan for, so the, the PUD plan that was approved, and there was multiple iterations and amendments to that. Excuse me. I believe there was a, contemplated a drive-through at that location, and it's, through research of the record, that's what I, but right now, it's not used as a drive-through. And we have talked to the applicant, builder, that there, that is not going to be used as a drive-through location. So, I wanted to make that aware. But this is, so there is an entrance, I do not have a, maybe you can see it here. There is an entrance here. These are, I believe, both, these are private roads. So they, they were built like that, and they still will exist as such. So then you have access, multiple locations here. That's what's there, that's what was approved. And we're, staff is really looking at the parking, the intensity and the compatibility of the uses on the site. But the parking thoroughfare act, thoroughfare plan is one part of it, you say. And the applicant, or the owner at the time, they have restripped, they have put signs up, I will note that. But like you said, that, that they're just paint on the pavement, and the users will go against it sometimes. And then there is, of course, the drive-through lane on the north side. So I think typical, you have a stacking going on right here. And then there is, you can park here and continue going around. There is not any outdoor patio contemplated with the build, the submitted plans. I verified that with the applicant. The only outdoor patio area at the site is a small island patio for a Coffee Hound. I'm not sure when that was installed, but it is there. And the only available area that they would be able to do anything like that would be on the rear or the front of the building, on these little islands here, in the future. If they, they'd have to come back for approval of that, and that would be, honestly, that would, that would be calculated for parking as well, and then you're really getting, yeah, it's getting tight. Number of factors I wanted to bring up. The PUD plan that's adopted specified 180 square, one spot per 180 square feet of this building as a whole. Staff in reviewing this parking plan as shown on the screen, stat, and the 53 required spots, staff used the off-street parking requirements as designated in code. Staff would recommend that the PUD plan permit uses that are allowed in the C2, which was the underlying zoning district prior to the PUD adoption. So you're gonna be adding restaurant, not, not things that are allowed in C3, as long as the parking, just like any other C2 multi-tenant building would, how we'd analyze that. If they meet the parking code for that location and other intensities, that they'd be permitted at this site. But as it currently stands, the PUD states "commercial retail", so that's, that's where we kind of are doing the amendment. We do have a floor plan of the location. So you have seating, a front bar, and then the majority of the restaurant actually is kitchen, a very large portion of it. So it's not public space. And then two very large restrooms as well, that are ADA. So after, with that analysis, staff recommends amending the, the PUD plan with the mentioned addition of the uses allowed on that site of seat, that are permitted in the C2 district. And then with the, add the following condition, that no future changes in use can occupy the vacancy or any change in use at the site. That would require more than allotted spaces of parking on the site. I can take any questions.
Thanks, Taylor. Anything to add, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add some clarifications in kind of how we got to where we got today with this case, and kind of what staff is attempting to do. And we have created a lot of PUDs in Bettendorf, and maybe we haven't been as diligent at monitoring them and keeping up with the changes. Our code has two types of PUD modifications, minor, which can be done administratively, or major, which requires your, your involvement. It does not have medium change to PUD. And so we had to figure out how to handle this request as staff. I was not comfortable making this administratively, although I think by code I could have done it administratively. So out of deference to this board and your collective wisdom, we thought we would bring it to you, even though it probably is a minor change, and get your input. And so that's what we're doing here today, is to kind of level-set this PUD that probably needs a little bit of care and feeding, taking care of the clarifications of what's allowed in the PUD, what is the parking requirements under the PUD, and clarifying those, level-setting this for, for the benefit of the landowner and the future users. And so that's what we're trying to get done here today. A lot of details, a lot of information, a lot of great historical work that was done by Taylor, and kind of what we're trying to get, get across, I guess.
I appreciate that, and I think it isn't that close call kind of deal, just because now you got three users ultimately in this building that'll be, would have been non-conforming with the original PUD, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I think you probably aired on the right side and, and went for the, the major call. I think I would have agreed with that, for sure. And the other challenge, I think the parking you're looking at, that, that entire area has been parking-challenged, especially with the parking around the apartments and out on the street. That has been a, a chronic underparked area, yeah. All right, any questions and comments from the commission regarding this case?
How many parking spots do they have for this building? Sorry.
53 is required, and 59 are.
Building, or for 59?
For this building, that's what I'm understanding.
Whole building, and there's 36 seats inside of that restaurant.
So our.
But there's like, how many other businesses, you know, in that one building? It just doesn't seem adequate at all for the plan.
Our, our parking requirements by, for code for restaurants, and this is our, where our currently adopted parking schedule is, is by square foot, correct? Yeah.
It just isn't adequate, so. I mean, we all kind of know that.
And we all, we can also take into account, and we've done this, such places as Falcon Avenue, or multiple places with different users, or I think Chops of the Woodlands is another example, where you have users that are different times of day.
Right.
And kind of sharing spots as well. We don't have a codified, like, matrix. A lot of, some ordinances will have a parking matrix for different uses, types, industrial and residential. But staff, code does allow staff to make, I mean, with enough evidence provided by the applicant. I mean, we, and that's what we're presenting here. Most of these hours are overlapping, though, but we do have the Coffee Hound, which is in the morning. We're gonna, morning is open until 8:00. The Smash Pizza, I believe, the proposed, I, I let the applicant answer those times, but he did present all the hours of the proposed, the current users and the proposed users. Even with that, and I, as I mentioned with the floor plan, a little majority of this area is kitchen space, it's like, so it takes a lot away from the unit space.
So that, that's kind of curious in itself, that you've got such a large kitchen for a relative small eating area.
Bakery in the name, Smash Pizzeria and Bakery, so it's gonna have a large focus on contract baking. That's why the kitchen is so huge.
All right, well that.
The focus actually is not on the sit-down restaurant, and I don't even think we ordered that much furniture to go inside. I think it might have been cut down to like 27 seats at this point, so.
Okay, that helps for perspective, so.
And the parking meets the requirements, right? I mean, unless you add anything to that other building, then that other, and that vacant spot gets six parking spots.
But I always think like. Whatever gets stuck in there.
If it meets the requirements, we can't really, what can we say, other than?
Other than it doesn't look like a good plan.
I mean, I think that that's kind of the.
The next guy in's gonna be in a squeeze.
Right.
Right, because he's got six spaces to use, or whatever.
Still your problem, because you own the building.
And I will note that, looking at parking for locations like this, the external, the other areas where overflow parking would occur would be on the, and the apartment building. So that's what key aspect we were looking at to, you know, defend their parking. And then we have those two commercial spots with those parking lots as well. And at this time, I am not aware of any cross-easements, so this is what the parking is. I believe there, this is one owner, the Vills is another owner, and I'm not sure the ownership of the two buildings.
Of the two buildings behind me?
Or, yeah.
Steve Swanson, Swanson Construction, I can't remember their corporate name, owns that. And I actually talked to Steve about possibly leasing part of his rear parking lot, because if you see the parking lot directly to the east, that's actually a, a large amount of cars for that parking lot. So we discussed that going forward, if we have an issue with parking there. I take care of all the snow removal for the entire area also, so. Working something out with him to where we could do employee parking in his back lot, and also his front lot. It's, it's got twice as many spots, and there's probably four or five cars in that one, so it's not a, it's not out of the realm of possibilities that we'll start using their parking for a fee, so.
Be nice to have that.
Yep.
And maybe more people will walk, or ride a bike.
Yeah.
Maybe. I do think Smash Pizza sounds pretty tasty right now.
Oh, I know.
Right about now.
We'll say yes if you bring us some pizza, okay?
It's the guy who made all the crust pizzas, so if you liked that, probably do okay there, so.
Other questions or comments from the commission? Any further comments from you?
No, thank you for entertaining the idea.
All right, yeah, appreciate your input. All right, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 22-023, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second. Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-023, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Thank you, 22-023 is recommended for approval. And I like the concept of working out that parking back there, too. All right. Last case, 22-021. Last case, 22-021.
Yep, that's me. I'll just let, I will not try to do this shift here, so. I'll just let Taylor drive for me. I just have a few slides for you. It's, it's time to probably look at updating our comprehensive plan and staff would, would really appreciate your approval of the RFP this before you. I do have a few slides if you could go to the first one. I can't read that far away, so I'm going to mirror you here. Our last plan was adopted in 2017, but I think the work actually began in 2015. So it's, it's probably older than that, that five-year, six-year date. We've had a really high growth rate in Bettendorf and we're really proud of that. But the faster you grow, I think the more you need to plan. We grew 17.7% between 2010 and 2020. And like we talked about here tonight, we've got some changing patterns of development. The way they're doing commercial development now is different. The way we're doing residential development is different. I don't need to bore you with those details. You're very aware of them. And then a bunch of projects, and we can list those, I-74, TBK, Sports Complex, The Bridges Lofts, new elementary schools. All those things are changing the way our community functions. And it's probably time to, to do another comprehensive plan. Hit the next slide. And then just here's, I'm not going to go through all my slides, I'm going to stop on this one. But here's some data for you that just shows you, the bottom chart was what was in our comprehensive plan. It gave us three growth scenarios. It gave us low, medium and high, if you will. And we are tracking on the high growth scenario. So the real data, the, the 2020 census data is the top chart and it put us at 39,000, whatever that says.
102, yep.
And we are, we're following the green line, the fast growth line. And so I really believe that we need to probably look at our, our comprehensive plan, do a robust update. And the details of the RFP are, are provided for you. I will tell you, one of the things that we're asking to be done is look at our annexation plans. If we want to continue with the same annexation plan, we want to modify it. We want to do a sub-area study, a more in-focused study around I-80 and Middle Road, where we have a lot of development going on with new projects coming there as we speak. So kind of just go through it. It's not a whole throw it out and start anew. It's more of an update, but it's going to be a robust update and it'll put more work on your plate, just so you know. Because you'll be asked to be involved. And we'll double your salary, I'm sure. So, so your recommendation for approval of that RFP would be greatly appreciated. We hope you would support it. We think it's time.
All right.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it's, but as I say, you can't beat a man or a woman with a plan, so let's have a good plan, so. Yeah, it's a good problem to have, so I applaud that you're looking forward and trying to anticipate the issues and challenges rather than solve them after they're here, so. Would you have a motion to support the RFP?
So I'm moved?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the case 22-021 RFP for comprehensive plan development or review. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay. Recommended for approval, which would take us to staff updates. You're, you're there. All right. We have landed. In that case, absent any objection, we're adjourned.